Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. Normally, I read the agenda and before we start, 7 o'clock, the community input. 7:05, joint school committee selectman meeting in order for the purposes of appointing a school committee member and to update us about the Carlisle School Solar Project. 7:30, a hearing on entertainment license for Fern's Country Store. 8:15, approval of the fiscal 2020 Fire Department payroll changes. At 8:30, the 2019 annual board committee appointments. And we will under that agenda item, we will have a discussion of the Complete Streets Committee Charge and a discussion of the Deer Committee Charter bow hunting regulations. At 8:45, the Board of Selectmen Policy and Guideline Review will get updates from board members. At 9:00 PM, appointments and resignations. 9:10, town administrators appoint at report. At 9:15, the liaison reports. 9:25 minutes at 9:35 adjournment, hopefully, if we keep on schedule. We normally try to keep to these agenda times, but these are just approximate times. Sometimes we take things out of order. I try to, if we're early, I try to sometimes hold things up so that if people are interested in that particular agenda item, they have a chance to come to the meeting. So for community input, is there something you can state your name and address and use?
Do I face this way now?
You can face that way, and we're going to give you a microphone.
Okay, that would be great. My name is Janie Janetsko. I'm at 898 Maple Street in Carlisle, Massachusetts. And I am, for the record and as a witness, I am against the deer hunt. I continue to be against the deer hunt. But the, I had not intention intended to make a comment, but I'm a bit concerned. There were a large group of people who were also against the deer hunt. And I had noticed in the first time the Deer Committee Agenda or information came up, it was only alerted to the townspeople a few days before the meeting. I took that as just an accident. It bypassed people. And now, when I had planned to come to the meeting to see what was happening because I just needed to know, I find out that the agenda that was posted initially is not the agenda that was here. The Deer Committee Agenda was added on Friday. Now, it has been protocol for the Carlisle Board of Selectmen to be consistent, at least for over a year, that whatever is posted electronically is also posted on the board and what's posted on the board is already posted electronically. I would have no reason to know that the agenda, if I get the electronic version, which I do, has, that electronic version has been changed and updated unless I receive an electronic notification from the town. I think it has been established over a year that it's going to be posted in both places. So I respectfully ask the Board of Selectmen to drop the Deer Committee Agenda portion of this meeting because I wasn't accurately noted, nor were the townspeople, because I'm sure many other townspeople might be here who are getting these notices. And so, in the future, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen establish a protocol that they cannot put out a paper copy only and post it when all these months and over a year, it's been posted both ways. So I want to thank you for paying attention.
I'd like to invite, is there any other public input? I'd like to invite the school committee to join us at the table. Yeah, pull up a chair. Pull up a chair. Two chairs.
You're going to have Luke's chair until he gets here.
I think you'll be a little late.
Yeah.
All right.
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Hi. So I'm the acting chair. Since Melinda, who was our chair, has resigned from the school committee, we're very sad about that because she was very, very good, as you know. So we're here tonight to ask you to consider our candidate to fill her spot, and that is Shannon Mae Lavery. And so Shannon could not be here tonight, and so I asked her to write a statement that I could share with you. And so I'll read that to you now. "To the members of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm sorry that a prior commitment prevents me from attending tonight and speaking with you in person. As you may recall, I ran for school committee in 2017 and 2018 motivated by my lifelong interest in education and my desire to contribute to our town. Although I was not successful in either campaign, the parents of CPS elected me to the school advisory council. I just completed my term as a parent member and intend to continue as the community advisor. It has been a wonderful opportunity to get to know the principals, to support them in implementing their plans, and to contribute to the ongoing conversation about improving our schools. My professional background includes an M.D. and wide-ranging experience in ed tech, including positions at WGBH Interactive, AOL Inc., the Concord Consortium, and the Virtual High School. I also have experience as a mentor, curriculum developer, and substitute teacher. I've been a resident of Carlisle for 13 years, during which my two children attended CPS. Beyond my professional experience, I also have an avid, an avid reader of ed blogs and books and always eager to engage others in a conversation about learning of all kinds. I would be happy to serve as a member of the Carlisle School Committee, working with our superintendent to meet the needs of all our students. Sincerely, Shannon Mae Lavery." We did get together just before this meeting and unanimously voted her our own support as the school committee.
So are you still in?
We are still in session. Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions that the Board of Selectmen have?
She's well-known.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
Shall I move?
A good choice.
I move that the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the school committee vote to vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, to appoint Shannon Mae Lavery to fill the vacant position on the Carlisle School Committee vacated by Melinda Gambino through the 2020 Annual Town Election.
Second. Any further discussion? So this is a committee, this is a vote.
Joint.
Joint vote, so everybody.
One person, one vote, is my understanding, right?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions? That looks unanimous to me.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
I recommend we stay in session during Jonathan's part in case there are any.
That'd be great. Should we stay here?
It's up to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Ready for me, Kay?
Yes.
You guys might want to slide down.
All right.
So I'm not standing on top of you. Okay.
Hey, John.
Hi again.
I have great news for you tonight. Six weeks ago, I reported to you that Amoresco had backed out of the deal for the solar canopy at the school and subsequently offered us a new deal that was not near as financially advantageous to the town, which the Solar Working Group recommended you reject in favor of starting a new RFP. Since then, Amoresco has received their ISA quote from Eversource, and it came in much lower than they had expected, allowing them to reconsider the financials. In addition, Amoresco's upper management got involved and decided they really wanted to pursue this project. And so, they asked us to return to the negotiating table and offered us exactly the same deal that they had previously offered financially, which was fully endorsed at town meeting, and also met a number of additional terms and conditions the solar group was looking for. These included working with us as a partner and with our paving contractor as a partner to get the best outcome for the town, adjusting their construction schedule to accommodate the town's needs, working with us to ensure the bus area would meet the requirements of pickup and drop-off, and agreeing to look into enabling future car chargers so we won't have to rip up the new pavement in a few years when we want to put those in. There are a couple of hitches, however. The interconnection proposed by Eversource does not go to the back of the school, but rather it's done on Church Street. This requires Eversource to convert two poles on Church Street from single-phase to three-phase electricity. That amounts to essentially adding two new wires next to the existing wire that's already there. However, this particular area is in the historic district, and so we will need to have approval from the Historic Commission to proceed with adding two wires. Given the small amount of it, I hope that's not a problem, but it is a potential concern for us. Secondly, we don't yet have a fully agreed-upon language for the lease and the PPA. We have a verbal agreement from their vice president as to the basic outline, but it is not yet set in stone. Third, we do have an ongoing RFP right now. And if we, we would need to cancel this in order to go with the proposal from our original RFP. The proposal that Amoresco is submitting to us is not suitable for the new RFP, so they can't simply re-propose it because in the new RFP, we had explicitly removed the bus area and limited this size to 250 kilowatts. Amoresco's proposal goes back, of course, to having those pieces, which is what they proposed exactly to previous town meeting. So, the Solar Working Group is here tonight to ask for a decision from the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, so it is extremely convenient that you're having a joint meeting. The Solar Working Group recommends the town accept this proposal from Amoresco and provide it all is agreed to and signed in the next few weeks to cancel the RFP that we have already started, number PV-19-1. You have before you, right, Tim, we have the data? Okay. The school committee probably doesn't yet. Okay, we will pass those out. So you have before you a proposal for a motion for both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. It consists of three parts.
Yeah, we're going to discuss.
One is to defer the current RFP for five weeks so that we have sufficient time to execute the agreements with Amoresco to everyone's satisfaction before we receive the new proposals. Second, to execute a letter of intent supplied by Amoresco that Town Council has approved. And third, to allow Town Council to update the lease and the PPA documents consistent with the agreed-upon changes and no other changes. And that last part is important because we want to be able to come back to you for another vote if Amoresco wants any additional concessions or does not make good on any of the verbal agreements. Okay? So, the Solar Working Group recommends moving forward with this agreement, but you should probably all take a moment to read it, since I believe you're all just getting it immediately now, both the motion that Town Council has recommended and the letter of intent. So I am at your disposal to answer any questions you may have.
What is the purpose of extending the deadline for the RFP?
So, the RFP is due back next week, Thursday, August 1st. If we receive those proposals and open them up and look at them, we, Town Council says that we would end up putting ourselves in a legally precarious position by then rejecting all of them and going back to the proposal from the previous one. So it is better for us to extend them, therefore we won't open them if we do receive any. And if everything works out with Amoresco, then we'll end up canceling it in a few weeks. But if we, we don't want to cancel it immediately because we want to be, keep it as an option in the event that everything doesn't work out in the next couple of weeks.
And this is because of changes, because they're going back to the previous?
Right. We would end up being, accepting a proposal from RFP PV-18-1, not RFP-19-1. So we effectively, we must cancel RFP-19-1 and never look at those if we accept these.
That strategy that you just said is legally acceptable to Town Council.
That is what Town Council recommend that we do, yes.
And the ones, the people who submit, regardless of whether we opened it, well, we didn't open it, so they can't, I presume they can't allege that we got some inside information that influenced back to PV-18.
Right. We have no idea what their financials are.
Can they say, gee, you know, like you did a bait and switch, and that was inconvenient to us, and can they challenge it on some other?
Sure they can tell it, tell, say that it's inconvenient. I would tend to agree that it's inconvenient to them. We put out an RFP and then canceled it.
It's pretty good that.
I think it would be more of a problem to open up the portals and then pick and choose which one.
Now, the RFP does explicitly have language in it that says this RFP may be canceled for any reason the town deems in the town's best interests. So, I think.
So there's, I mean, I understand your risk mitigation because Amoresco has proven itself to be a negotiator. But is it safer course to actually just unilaterally cancel it now before you receive any bids, just, and then run that risk and you open it up again and you face delay? Because we're not going to build this thing for another year anyway.
Yep. So, if we were to do that, and then Amoresco were to not make good on any of the promises that we have verbally, then we would be stuck as a town because we would have to go out and make a whole new RFP. I cannot imagine that any of the companies that are currently bidding would, would be willing to bid again.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
So.
And I'm wondering what part the fact that we did put an RFP out now had in bringing Amoresco back to the table.
They have not said that it had anything to do with it. I think the key factor was really finding out how much Eversource was going to charge them to connect it and also getting their upper management involved. We are now dealing directly with the vice president in charge of all grid-tied solar photic systems. So I think he has authorization to do pretty much whatever he wants in the company, so he can make these deals.
I would not want to, I still would not want to cancel maybe the next R.
I have two questions. One is, I mean, it's a pretty sudden turnaround. I understand the interconnection charge was much lower. Not that I'm not trusting, but could there be more to it that we would find that in these RFP responses, it would actually get a much bigger deal, better deal, and that's why they're willing to?
So, it is the assessment of the Solar Working Group that that is extremely unlikely. You would have to have many things work out in the best possible outcome for that to be possible, including the interconnection charge would have to somehow be substantially less than what it is going to be for, for Eversource, or sorry, for Amoresco. So, but that is possible with a smaller array, right? So I won't, I can't rule it out, but it would have to be substantially less and, yeah, somehow their construction costs would have to be magically less, too. So, it is our opinion that this is likely to be the best financially, financially advantageous thing for the town, but we, of course, can't know that because we haven't received the proposals. And also, I should mention that although you authorized us to start an ISA process, we have not actually done that yet. Various things got in the way of it, and so we have not expended the $7,500 that you authorized six weeks ago. So that would also, so we don't know from that perspective what Eversource might charge for a smaller array.
I was just wondering if there is a drop-dead date in this, this agreement that?
Yes. The, I believe it says August 6th in the agreement, but Town Council advises us that she's going on vacation on August 3rd, so it's going to be done by August 2nd or not at all.
So I have one other question. It's, I'm not sure if it's directed at Tim or who, if I may. So when, when we had the, it's not specific actually around about this one, but when we had the combined project, all of the income was going to go into the general fund for us to figure out how to do it potentially for, you know, other educa, energy-saving items. With it only being on the school, is the money still going to the general fund? Not general fund, the town?
Right. How many didn't otherwise direct this was revenue, so it would go to the general fund? How many could change that going forward?
Okay.
It's a 20-year.
But as it is now, it still can go to other energy-saving things or to help offset paving or whatever we decide to do.
Right. Speaking of which, the packet you have in front of you probably has the actual financials. So Block 1 is completely full. We believe Block 2 will be full within the next day or so. It is most likely that if everything executes to plan, we will end up in Block 3. But if either the town or Amoresco ends up running slower, then we'll end up in Block 4. So you can kind of get a pretty good idea of how much the town is going to make on us now.
So this is 22,500 plus 11,277 per year?
Yeah, Block 3 is 22,500 in lease and a pilot payment of 11,277.
Per year.
So a total of, what, 30, 33,000, almost 34,000?
330,000.
So, per year.
660,000 over the life of the lease.
Overall, overall life, yep.
And under this proposal from Amoresco, this would be the larger array that originally had.
Yes, it would include the bus area and include the four arrays that they had proposed for over the main parking lot.
Would be some benefit to that.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we need to do is, we got the superintendent up and let's hear about what the issues are with regard to the bus area.
Yes, my concern, my question would be.
Can you come up and use a mic?
I apologize for not following a lot of curves, as you said.
Yeah, you need the mic.
He wants to go there.
You have to keep coming up.
You had a mic.
That way, that way the people on television can hear you.
So my only question with regard, I felt more comfortable when they took the bus loop array off, but now bringing it back on, we did have a design review process where once they had a design, they were going to present it to the committee again for our review and for our endorsement. Will that still be the case?
Yes.
So at that point in time, adjustments may need to be made, and those will be made.
Yes. They, so this, this is a potential sticking point. It's our number-one negotiating point. The wording that Town Council is working out is basically setting it up so that they will ensure that that bus pickup and drop-off is going to work out. If that means, you know, we have to restripe, if that means we have to adjust the islands, the, they are currently at a 72-foot wide span. The bus area, as I currently measure it, is 77 feet, so it's going to be slightly smaller. I don't know if that five feet is material. So, that's, that's a point of potential concern. But I think if we move forward with this and the language is in the lease saying that they have to make it work with the bus area per the school's needs, then they have to make it work.
To our satisfaction.
To our satisfaction, yep.
I guess that was, that was the only concern we had. I mean, it was, it's still to be addressed.
Saying not enough room for the buses to maneuver, what?
We want to make sure there's enough room for the buses to come in, drop off, and pull out safely with everything else that's taking place.
And you said our space is five foot less than, or with the solar installation, it'll be five foot less than it currently is? Is that what you were saying?
Approximately. That's kind of what it looks like, but I mean, my measurement is not a survey, so I can't say exact. So I did pretty close.
I mean, we have a tiered parking lot, so if they, I mean, that's a question, right? If we determine in an assessment that we need those five feet for whatever the reason is, and therefore, and I'm just guessing here, we have to actually landfill out, we have to fill out where the stairs are to make it, you know what I'm saying? You have to extend.
Oh, no, that's.
Sidewalk direction.
No, the.
You'd have to go out towards where the other parking.
Right. So the, the way I see it right now, the piers are actually a little ways in from the sidewalk into the paving. And so, if they needed to move things over, right, if they needed to make a wider span, the thing to do would be to push those piers closer to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk, okay.
Right? And, and the other side is also, the piers are just a little bit in from the grassy area, and so it would be to push them out just a little bit.
It could be in the grassy area.
Yeah. So I, the, the thing is, is Amoresco can't current, or when we were negotiating with them, they couldn't currently agree to that because they don't know what the, you know, making it five feet wider would actually entail for them, right, in terms of financials? How, how big a deal is that? And so, they like us to run exactly the process that we said, which is figure out, can we get everything to work out underneath this array? If so, then let's go with this. If not, then we have to go back to the drawing board there.
You say drawing board, does that mean also the negotiation board or just?
No.
So they're, they're signing for these payments?
Right.
Even if there end up being some extra?
Right.
Construction costs?
It's gonna, yeah. But they, they haven't agreed to deal with that aspect of it, if there's additional construction costs. We don't know what would happen if it doesn't work out.
Is Rob part of your Solar Working Group?
He is, although he hasn't, and Jim hasn't been at the last few meetings, so.
When it gets, well, we don't need him for negotiations, but definitely when it starts to.
But he definitely needs to, yeah, yeah.
I have some other short questions for you.
Yes. Yes, and like I said, that was our number-one negotiating point, because if the bus area doesn't work for the school, nothing else matters. So.
I have a few other questions based on what you said, Jonathan. You said they're going to work with us as a partner, like, how is that different? How would that be different than what they were going to do before?
The Solar Working Group did not feel that they were operating as a partner, more as, as kind of a contractor, not quite adversarial, but pretty close. And so I think the act of getting upper management involved has completely turned that around, and now they're acting like a partner. Like, how can we make this work for you and us together?
I yelled back.
Yeah.
As we say around my house. Car chargers, I presume this language in here about conduits and stuff, that's what that's about.
Yeah, so that, that was, that was one of the things that came up in negotiations. We hadn't thought of it before when we actually did the original RFP. So one of the things that we were thinking about was saying, well, if we've got this beautiful parking lot, we know the parking lot's going to last 30 years. I find it really hard to believe that we're not going to all be driving electric cars in 30 years, so it would be foolish for us not to have chargers sitting there. So we'd like to do something if we can, working with Amoresco so that they put in conduit, essentially in the same trenches that they're already going to be running stuff, so that it's just down there and available for us should we ever get around to deciding to put the car chargers in.
Okay. And we assume it's 110, single-phase?
No, it's actually, there, the, the, Amoresco immediately said, hey, that's a great idea. Let's put in some big stuff so that you can put in a lot of car chargers that charge really fast.
Okay, good.
And we said, rock on, let's do that.
The ISA, so it's the prop, Amoresco will own the ISA, right?
Yes.
Interconnections.
Yes. Well, they ultimately had to own it anyways, no matter how it works, because they're, they're the owner.
We were going to apply on our own in the second round?
Yeah. Then what would happen if we did it for the second round? If we applied, then we would immediately have to turn it over to the contractor that would actually own the array.
So it's really, it's a distinction without a difference.
It's to keep the schedule going faster.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a quick question from the prior meetings. I remember that we were basically going, trying to hit that Block 3. That's what we're target.
Yes.
So it hasn't really changed.
It hasn't changed yet.
So all those negotiations and things have worked pretty fast and smoothly through the town and negotiations where we're still looking at about the same block.
We're still looking at Block 3, yep. There's a lot to go through still, right? This is not the end of the deal, right? So we have to get through the Historic Commission now, we have to get through the Planning Board, you guys have to be happy with the design, the Board of Selectmen has to be happy with the lease, right? So, there's a lot of stuff that we still need to do before we can actually get to the point where we actually know whether we're in Block 3 or not. So.
What is the trigger, what, where do you have to be to get up, be on the list of Block 3? It has to be done.
So, all the lease agreements and everything, the whole site plan details, the finalized ISA with Eversource, and with us, it's, I believe it's termed all non-ministerial permits, which believe, I believe means that the Planning Board has to sign off, and the Historical Commission would have to sign off, and the school committee would have to sign off on all the design details.
So definitive design?
Yeah, absolutely. Everything has to be nailed down exactly.
What's your ballpark on that date? To have it all done?
Yeah, do you, it's, they, so they're, Amoresco sent us a schedule, but I don't have it immediately in front of me. I think it's sometime in September. Amoresco is asking for the Planning Board to put in a special meeting just to discuss this so that it lines up, you know, with the timeframe of when everything works out. So, because right now, the Planning Board is on, I guess, a reduced schedule, much like the rest of the town. And so they need one on a particular date, which is the right number of weeks after they give the Planning Board their final design. So, yes.
Is there a Planning Board rep on your Solar Committee?
There is not. Our, our original intent with the Planning Board was that we would be presenting to them regularly, and that hasn't happened either.
Somebody, you could still appoint somebody, right?
Yeah.
I would, I think they're going to be one pulling. I would, I think they're going to be one pulling the tent, so I, if I were you, I would find somebody to, uh, join up.
Yes.
We've, just upstairs, we approved Melinda, even though she's not a school committee member anymore, to be the representative of the school committee as part of your working group, she's volunteered for that. And apparently it's okay even if she's not a resident anymore, still okay.
Yes, she's very passionate about this, we've loved having her there.
We, we feel comfortable with that, so I'm using it as an analogy, all, informationally, but also.
Yes.
As an analogy, find somebody who, or maybe somebody who used to be on planning board, name became Bino.
Yeah, maybe somebody she knows.
Somebody who will, you know, represent the planning board and help you.
Never did move out of Carlisle.
Yes.
It'll be like a date night.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a great idea, I think we probably should do that, and so I guess I'll take the action to reach out to the planning board and see what we can do. Um, so, but that'll probably then come up at your next meeting, right, because you'll have to appoint them to the solar working group.
Are there enough positions on it?
Oh, it's a working group?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter?
Oh, Tim can do it.
Tim can just do it, alright, great.
Tim can do it, whatever he wants.
It's good to give Tim lots of power.
Jonathan, thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, no problem. I do, I, so, so we do actually need a vote tonight, because if you don't vote tonight, then you're voting to reject this, and we move on to RFP, the RFP nineteen.
You want me to read it?
You ready to make that motion?
Sure.
Yeah.
Everybody comfortable with that? Okay. I make a motion with respect to the solar project on school property, I move that the board of selectmen and the Carlisle School Committee, are we doing this jointly?
Yes.
Okay, that the, um, board of selectmen and the Carlisle School Committee vote to take the following actions. One, to authorize the town administrator to extend the deadline of the current RFP PV nineteen dash one to September ninth, two thousand nineteen. Two, to execute a letter of intent with Amoresco documenting the town and Amoresco's intent to execute a lease and power purchase agreement on the terms and conditions contained in Amoresco's response to the town's two thousand eighteen RFP and the ensuing contract negotiations. Three, to approve and authorize the chair to execute on the board's and school committee's behalf.
Which chair?
The chairs. The chairs to execute on the board of selectmen's and the school committee's behalf.
Actually, I think I'm the one that, I think it's only the board of selectmen that execute it?
No, in this case, the board, the board needs to approve it per town meeting, and then the school committee executes it, but
Got it.
we're gonna, to make life simple, we're gonna have both chairs sign it.
So to approve and authorize the chair of the board of selectmen and the chair of the Carlisle School Committee, uh, a lease and power purchase agreement with Amoresco on the terms and conditions contained in the May two thousand nineteen drafts with the following revisions to the lease. A, tenants shall cooperate with town and town's contractor to coordinate the installation of the canopy system with the school paving project to ensure the best outcome for the town. B, to incorporate those minor edits noted in the June eleventh board of selectman meeting and communicated to town council, plus any other minor edits as deemed necessary by town council. C, that Amoresco commit to a schedule that is mutually acceptable to the school and Amoresco, which may be amended from time to time. D, to revise exhibit A with a new plan that shows the new interconnection and affirms that design of bus area will accommodate bus pickup and drop-off requirements. E, to authorize Amoresco to lay conduit in Amoresco's trenches, which will be reserved for the town's future use, provided that laying of such conduit is feasible and can be done economically.
Second.
Okay, I just have actually a question about the, the edits, because I read that extensively and did send a whole bunch of edits, so I would love to, um, I think they're all my, anyway.
Those are the edits that were.
That's the edits that we're talking about?
Yep, town council has them.
An opportunity to review that again when it's done to make sure, because some of them were
Yes, will you?
More important than others.
So you have to sign now?
Yeah, so I have, I have a chance, I will have a chance to review those, okay. That was lovely reading, by the way, it was entertaining, enjoyed it.
Kept you up at night.
Yes.
You really know how to have a good time.
I do.
Okay, is there any, are there any other questions or any other discussion?
Well, we're in, we're in discussion phase here, so I just want to take the pulse of the, our committee, make sure everybody's good.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
Uh, and I do, uh, just as a commentary, I think, was Luke chairman last year?
I was.
You were, you and I, we, we agreed it would be joint signatures, right, at that time?
I believe so.
Back when you and I were chairs.
I believe so.
Remember that time, okay, yeah, good, okay, so it's consistent, I'm happy, fine.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, any further discussion? We're going to go to vote, all those in favor of this motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That was unanimous. Tom, or Tim?
Thank you very much.
You, Mr. Goddard.
Both chairs should probably sign that as well.
This one? Yeah, do we have an original one? I'll sign mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do need, uh, town council recommended that, um, everyone here, uh, sign the letter of intent. So.
Everyone?
Everyone?
We're getting both chairs sign, is that good enough?
Yeah, I mean, both chairs at least, but, um, we might just want to have
Do we have an original?
All eight members sign. The more signatures, the better.
So the, um.
This is the number of people breathing down their back.
The chairman had a question for, uh, Mr. Goddard, about personal liability and signing these things, maybe you can explain.
He outed me.
Well, you explain for the, everybody's benefit, what the coverage, no, you don't have, just generally speaking, what the liability of elected officials is in signing.
In signing this, as a person.
Well, you, you're, you're acting within the scope of your duties and responsibilities as an elected official at town Carlisle, so you're, you're covered.
Until I make a personal mistake.
Insurance, yeah, I mean, well, for instance, you're not, you know, covered for civil rights violations and other
Right.
egregious behavior, but you're acting within the scope of your duties.
You can make a mistake, you just can't, like, maliciously and willfully do something.
Right.
Mistakes we all make.
Could be, um, sued if they directed you to do something wrong and did it, but you're not personally liable.
Thank you.
Well done, Luke.
Alright!
Thank you guys very much.
I'd like to move, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the school committee portion of this meeting.
Want to have her just quickly sign that?
Second.
Just so you have it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Oh.
Just saying. Quickly have everybody sign that.
Oh, Matt, um. Hey, Al Lewis, how are you?
I signed my copy.
They should do that to Kerry when he come back. You want everybody to sign.
Do you want all the signatures?
Yeah. Did you all, one of them want yours? Because I just signed my, my copy of mine and sent it to Tim.
We'll do it all in one, I think.
Hey, Miss Lear.
Just don't tell my husband.
Official, uh.
Yeah.
You haven't been struck by lightning yet, so you're okay.
It's just divorce I'm worried about.
Isn't that the same thing? Okay.
For different reasons, David.
All right, um, it is a little after seven-thirty, we have a hearing, I'm going to, uh, I'd like to have a motion to open the hearing for the entertainment license for Fern's Country Store, please.
I move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one four.
No, I just need to open the hearing, I just need a motion to open the hearing.
Oh, I thought that's what this was, okay.
Yeah, it is, but that's the motion that's going to.
To approve it, got it.
Uh, do you have a second?
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so we're now in a public hearing for the entertainment license for Fern's Country Store.
Good evening.
Oh, you're wearing a thing, so somehow I didn't, yeah.
Sorry, uh, Matt Hurwick, owner of Very Barn LLC, owner of Fern's Country Store. Um, just wanted to go and open up discussion for our application for entertainment. Uh, obviously, we already host a lot of fun events for people to meet old friends and new friends down at Fern's, and we would like to visit the idea of hosting live musicians, music both on the patio and in the cafe, as well as craft nights and other club events for them to host both public and private events on the property. So it's not just music, it's also other culturally enriching events that may benefit Fern's or other smaller clubs. Um, I'm not sure of the process of it, so this could be baby steps, or you guys can guide me on that with any questions you may have for intent.
Have you had any reaction from a butters?
Um, no negative reaction, we've had lots of positive reaction with people already enjoying the events that we're doing.
I have a, a question about that, I mean, I, I support this in, in general, but in the past, we've always stumbled when it comes to doing things at Fern's because the notice didn't go out quite, you know, it went technically to a butters, but it didn't go out quite wide enough, and so there were people that had been left out. Have you personally reached out to other people in the area just to make sure that, oh, wider than what you're, what were required?
Obviously during the summertime, it's hard to reach out with people, so some of the local business owners and some of the immediate neighbors that I'm friendly with, and no, I've reached out to them, as well as using the Facebook family connection and parents groups and just trying to get some feedback on if this is something that people would enjoy, uh, and have.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a bit concerned because there, I don't know, who's from the center here?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, 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 um, but usually, I mean, because the last time when Larry came in to extend the, the, what, I, it's the, the patio area, what did he call it, the piazza, right?
Yeah.
There were probably like thirty people in here, um, and their concern, you know, was, you know, what's going to happen next? If, you know, if we allow that, is there going to be live music, and, and, um, it's just surprising that there are only five people here. Um, so I, I just kind of want to echo what Nathan's saying, you know, I, um, I just think we should take a little more time to this, you know, I don't know what, what the plan is in terms of when you want to roll this out, but, um, yeah, it, it seems like this went out, what, a week ago? Um, to people, right, July fifteenth?
Is that pretty standard time for posting the notice?
Well, I think the, the notice, or the, the public hearing has to be posted, what, two weeks in advance, right? And it's got to run concurrently and all of that stuff.
It's publicly advertised, the butters were notified.
Yeah.
Right, most of the butters are kind, kind of Carlisle.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get a strict list.
Yeah, but.
It's pretty limited.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that there'd be any, any pushback on it, I, I have no idea, it's just, the people who were here, um, worried last time, actually, the time before last, they were worried, uh, are, are not on this list.
Right.
Uh, but the, the next time, they were all here and they were all very supportive, so I don't know what the, the support would be.
So we have five people here who are butters, and this is a hearing, and I would like to know, this is the media view, uh, would care to offer any comment? Because that's what, this is for. Would you come forward to the microphone, because this is, thanks, and I need to know. Hi, Sandy.
Hi, Sandy Nash, maybe the reason that so few people are here is because no one questions Matt and his intentions and how he's going to roll things out. Matt's done nothing but demonstrate, um, thoughtfulness as it relates to his growth. Um, he's starting to run a business, and it needs to appeal to a wide audience, and he has, um, really gained consensus before he's made any sweeping changes with a store, and I think that, I, I'm speaking for myself, I think he's done a fantastic job with a store, I want him to be successful, it adds great value to the integrity of our center. Um, I obviously embrace, uh, the flavor of our center, and I want to keep it, um, valuable, and Matt's done nothing but, uh, show that in how he's been thoughtful about including us in the conversation, and trust me, news travels like wildfire in the center, and, um, I don't know, I, I, I support him a hundred percent.
Thank you. Won't you come up with that, please identify yourself once you get there, that's all right, once you get here.
Mike Rollins, I just want to say I agree with everything that Sandy said.
What's, what's, sorry, what, your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Uh, thirteen Lowell Street.
Hi, I'm Deborah Kablatsky, fifty-five Lowell Street, and I echo everything that Sandy says, Sandy Nash says.
Thank you.
I thought you were raising your hand again, I was going to say, you've already spoken. Anybody else would like to, uh, contribute comments? Saying none.
Anybody have any concerns?
Okay, ready for motion?
All right, um, can I ask, when was this, um, advertised and noticed, how many weeks ago?
It was mosquito, I'm not sure, they're publishing several, it was a few weeks ago.
The notice went out.
It was two weeks ago, I know that.
The notice went out July fifteenth.
Right, yeah.
That's only one week.
Yeah, right.
Um, we don't have to close, you know, if there's any concern about, um, getting enough information, we can not close this hearing tonight, we could
Continue the hearing, put it on the day.
And, um, ask for written comment, um, and then, um, make our decision at our next meeting.
Yeah, no, I.
If we would feel better about that.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely would, it's, it's, you know, again, I, like Nathan, I don't disagree with this, you know, I mean, I think it's a great idea, um, as long as, you know, there's enough consensus in, in the center, um, because, yeah, just, I'm a little surprised that, you know, the last time, just the piazza piece was, there were like thirty-something, it was packed, you know, it was, it was full.
That was a physical expansion, right?
Well, they, but the concern was that there was going to be live music.
Yeah, it's, it was what's going to happen next, they didn't really care about, you know, and, and then there was the drinking on the piazza and that sort of thing, which, you know, obviously, you know, nobody is concerned about now, but, uh, but yeah, it was the, you know, is, is live music going to come, and it's, and, you know, and Larry, I think, said, no, that's not the plan, but ultimately, no, it's, now it's here, right? So, um, I think it's just, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's and making sure that, you know, everybody's on board, so.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah, um, so Matt, tell me, how, if this was approved, how would it, how do you envision it being different then going forward than what has been happening now?
Well, the events that we currently do, like wine tastings and things like that, already occur within business hours, so we just kind of blend that with the current, um, you know, entertainment that we're doing with winemakers coming in and, and talking. We'd showcase local musicians, if it was like a, a paint night on the patio, or if the weather didn't permit it, inside the cafe. Um, so, for all ages, really, not just the adults.
But I know you've done a few things out on the patio with, you know, music, just, was it just last Friday, I think, or?
Old Home Day was the last one.
Well, somebody was out on the, on the.
Three weeks ago, we had another event, yep.
With live music, just, yeah, and that was just a general event, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, do you, is the idea that you want to be able to do that more frequently and allow other groups to host something as well, is?
Yeah, both, we like to have kind of a, a set schedule for people in town to know that there's something going on on any given night or weekend, um, and then give clubs, uh, COA and senior moments, they had an event just this past week, actually, they had a ukulele with their coffee hour, uh, on the patio. And all these events, we don't charge for, this is, you know, a, a spot for them to use that to their own benefit. Uh, but I think by moving forward with an entertainment license, it would allow, uh, these, these events to occur for private clubs or for us to make it a fundraiser and things like that. Um, so the, as far as changes to what we do in the patio, the, um, capacity stays the same, so we have to go in and make sure that whatever the fire department and I set for the numbers, that that's.
And the frequency would, it sounds, would increase?
Correct, it could be every other week, it could be once a month, it's also weather permitting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, so, uh, I'm looking at the permit, is this, is this an annual permit?
Yes.
Why doesn't that say anywhere on here?
Yeah, it doesn't specify.
Like what the term of it is.
It's a term of entertainment license agreement.
Looks like it's an open-ended permit.
Well, uh, in the motion, it certainly specified.
Yeah.
It expired at the end of the year, then you did your license renewals in December.
Ah, so we could do this, uh, that, that would be a nice little, um, you know, a, a nice little, um, pilot program, is if we could do that now until the end of the year. Um, I hate to wait until the end of August, which is when our next meeting would. the end of August, which is when our next meeting would probably be, you'll lose the whole summer, or the rest of the summer, do anything.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, you know, my, my concern is just that, you know, the last time, there were a significant number of people here.
Yeah, I understand, but this would, this is not like for the ever and ever amen. This is until the end of the year, at which time it'll all be revisited. And.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
At that point, people, if they're really unhappy, can come back to us and say, you know, we didn't come to your hearing, but now that it's happened, we're not happy, or now that it's happened, you know, we, we really like it. I think it's a great idea.
Can we do something like, say, it's 90 days and we extend, we extend the public hearing 90 days so that there's no need to repost or any payment to the Butters or anything? We just chat about it again in 90 days?
Yeah. Yeah, I like that idea, right?
That way it's a little shorter. It's a pilot. You get going. You don't have to pay anything else or do anything else. We just come back at whatever the date is that we pick. And if anybody has, has had any complaints or anything. We got really slammed last time because we did not let people know. I think a lot has changed since then, so I wouldn't be surprised if nobody was here against it. But I would just sure hate to hear people saying, you excluded us, and then we did it again.
And I think it's important, but I also think it's important to give it a try, because I think a lot of times, people are more afraid of what they don't know than once they've experienced it, and now they know what they're up against. And then they have something more concrete to be able to tell you. They might say, you know, boy, that amplification, when you get it to that many decibels, or, you know, the live entertainment, the acoustic stuff, we have no problem with, because, you know, but when you put that amp on, forget it, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's just for the record, I, I support it. And I think that you're doing a great job at Ferns.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that we're getting all the feedback that we should be getting.
Yeah. Okay, so is somebody ready to make that motion? Well, first of all, yeah, okay.
I'll try.
So, and we are, did we decide not to close the hearing then?
I think we don't.
For 90 days, we'll.
We have to push it out to a date and time certain, 90 days from now.
Okay, so to reopen the hearing.
So a time that Matt can be here.
You're going to take a vote to grant the license for 90 days?
Yeah.
So then you're closing this hearing, and you're taking that vote. It sounds like there'd be a second hearing if you thought it was necessary.
Can, we cannot, can vote pursuant to a follow-up to, to, to the closing? Is there any way we can do it without closing it, so we don't have to go through the notification?
I think there's not. I think you've got to close the hearing, vote to approve it for whatever length of time you're going to approve it, and then.
That takes away my no work.
Public information session, if people wanted to come and say, this is great, or we hate it, then maybe you'd notice a second hearing. But I don't think you can vote to approve it.
Practically speaking, 90 days, you get into the weather permitting issue. It's probably the same thing of just approving it to the end of the year.
Yeah, wind it down by October, or October anyway, yeah.
Well, it's inside too.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, so if we want to make a motion, we need to close the hearing and then make the motion.
So can we, can we, since we are forcing this, can we say it's 90 days and all notifications and everything we will do as a town? So that Matt doesn't have to go through that process again? We'll just, we'll do it?
We do the notification.
Yeah, but he has to pay for it though, doesn't he?
When he picks up the license, usually, if the town doesn't make one, like, it's not paid for it.
Yeah, so we won't do that again. We won't. There's not a second charge for it.
Right, yeah.
And you're renewing it at the end of the year for next year, so there'd be another, kind of another sort of check-in.
It's 90 days from now.
End of, um, October.
October.
See, why not go to the end of the year?
It's the end of the year.
I mean, I think, you know, we're not talking, you know, 180 days. Well, the other.
I think there should, I actually think it should be less than 90, but, because the thing is, ultimately, if it's fine, then it's fine, right? We're going to extend it.
And I are so shocked from the last.
Yeah, it's, we really got hammered, yeah. Because, because the thing is, ultimately, if it's, I mean, even if you did 30 days, right? Just, just to throw a number out there, right? If it's fine after 30, then we're going to extend it to the end of the year. If it's fine after 60, we're going to extend it to the end of the year, right? So it's better to have the information earlier as opposed to later. You know, but I mean, ultimately, I think if people complained, you probably stop.
Right.
Right? But, yeah, it's, you got hammered last time, you know, and that was just to put it down.
That's why you get the big bucks.
Yeah, exactly.
Here's another thought. There is another Board of Selectmen meeting scheduled for 13th.
Yeah, but we're probably not going to hold it.
We're probably not going to have it.
Two of you won't be here.
Oh, whoa, whoa, okay. Well, so we'd have to wait till the 27th then?
Yeah.
That's the whole summer.
Yeah, that's the whole summer, at least.
Well, you'd lose a month.
Labor Day.
Yeah.
Labor Day.
And, I mean, it seems like the two alternatives are, if, if you support the idea of allowing for more people in the community to know that this is going to happen, and then provide an opportunity for more feedback, then you wait till whenever the next Board of Selectmen meeting is going to occur.
Yes, the 47th.
If you, and it seems to me, if you are comfortable granting the license to run through the end of the year, or granting the license, then how long you granted for seems to me is, is kind of a moot point. You're granting the license, and you're going to try it out. And so why not just make it through the end of the year when it has to be renewed anyway? I mean, I personally, just, just having had some experience on a different issue that's come before town, the Board of Selectmen, I would support the idea of giving time for more community input. Again, I, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's important to make sure everybody feels like they knew this was coming, and they're not surprised suddenly to see a whole schedule of entertainment planned.
So you were advocating for, what, the 30 or 90?
To wait.
For a quarter?
Well, no, to either not, not approve the license tonight, allow for posting again, or whatever the technical thing is, to, to let more people know. And that it's, it's put in, it's put on the website that we're going to have a hearing next, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting on the 27th.
We're just going to continue the hearing. We won't make a motion. We continue the hearing.
Yes, and then allow for whoever wants to come, and they've had plenty of notice, that it's going to be discussed, and we make a decision then.
And Tim, there's no way we can do this where it can also be a trial period where they can start?
I don't believe you can.
Well, there's no point if you're afraid of what they're going to say.
Right.
If you propose a hearing, then you vote to grant it.
You can't have your cake and, yeah.
Yeah.
My personally in favor of granting it.
Till the end, granting it for, to the end of the year?
To the year, yeah.
I, I think I am too, because I, I, you know, it's not like it's in perpetu, you know, in perpetuity. It is a trial period. This was in the mosquito. It was noticed. He hasn't had any complaints up to now on, for the activities he's had to date. I don't think, you know, it's, it's kind of like a pilot. I'm, I'm thinking of it in terms of a pilot. We're not giving him a whole year. It's a pilot project to see, will this fly? And if it doesn't, at the end of the year, it doesn't get renewed. It's not, and it's, and he has to come back for renewal, so.
You didn't sit through it, Alan.
My, my, my concern is just, I was the chair at the time, and I personally promised that I would make sure that it was broadcast wider, because it was the, the minimum amount of time, which is what we're seeing here.
Right.
The minimum number of Butters noticed. And I'm, I didn't know this was happening, I would have brought it up to you. But I promised that I would just make sure that more people knew the next time around. And I did, and the next time around, everybody was totally supportive of it.
Yeah.
So.
And I would just say, I think as a general rule, my feeling is, we, we want to, we want to, when we're making a change that will affect, you know, reasonably large number of people in town, I think we want to do it in a way that everybody feels they have an opportunity to, they, they know it's coming, and they have an opportunity if they want to express support or non-support, that they have the opportunity to do that. And that it, and not that I think we're doing this, but I think it, going ahead without broader notice, I think can lead some people to think we're kind of trying to slide something by, which I don't think we want to be in the position of people thinking that, even if that's absolutely not what we're doing. So I would support waiting until the next.
Until the 27th.
Board of Selectmen meeting on the 27th.
Summer's gone.
So, fall's supposed to be the nicest time of the year here, Alan.
Yeah, okay. The concern should be the Butters and that the town gets heard, not that, you know, not that, in Ferns, and no, no offense, but not that Ferns gets to host live entertainment. I mean, I just, it was, it was not pleasant the last time. And it was basically, yeah, as Nathan said, it was the same process. And, you know, and I think it was the same time of year.
And we were all like, yay, go for it. Sounds great.
Yeah, yeah. It didn't work out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I mean, and we can make sure that, you know, we can reach out to people that we know in the center and just make sure that people are aware.
Mosquitoes.
Seeing the discomfort and reading the tea leaves, I am going to propose continuing this open hearing.
Is it possible that maybe there was an outrage because of previous owners, like disputes with other people?
Always possible. Anything's possible. You want to come to the?
That's necessarily something we want to speculate on.
No, yeah, no, absolutely. No, absolutely.
Yeah, it's undermined, it's come to my attention that there's been a lot of issues in town with the previous owners, with a lot of people in the center. So is it possible that the outrage was more geared towards them versus making Ferns a wonderful community, a good place for the town center?
I don't think we can speculate about that here.
Right, but, but I'm just saying that, that is something that you might want to keep into consideration too. And I mean, we've been to every event that he's ever had, and it's always been respectful and wonderful, and we just love it so much. And to imagine him not being able to do this would be so sad for us. We're all here to support him because we love it so much. So I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
So I, I hope that everybody here understands that it seems to me like there's unanimous support for this on the board.
Yes.
We just want to make sure that everybody's heard and that, you know, a good deed doesn't go punished.
Right.
Yeah. So, as a result, I am declaring that this meeting will be.
Someone should move that.
The hearing is continued?
The hearing is continued.
Continue with.
I move that the public hearing regarding the entertainment license for Ferns Country Store at 8 Lowell Road be.
Could you say just continue to our next meeting?
You know, it has to be a date and time certain. It'll be continued to September 27th.
No, no, August 27th.
August 27th at 7:30.
Yep, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we think that there's going to be another meeting?
Well, I mean, you could, if the three people who are definitely going to be here on August 13th are, you know, really, really want to meet and just have this on their agenda.
Don't look at me, because I'm one of the ones that's not here.
You're not going to be here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I'm not here.
Oh, you're not here either?
Oh, well, then that's only two people that would have, I mean, I was going to come in to make a quorum.
So we can't have a meeting anyway.
So, it's August 27th.
So the motion is for August 27th.
Early, yes.
Okay.
So why do we have to wait until the 27th? Could we do a meeting on the 20th?
Well, if people are available on another day.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean.
You may, you may have a quorum.
Yeah.
I have to look.
I mean, I'm around the 20th or the 22nd.
I don't have my phone, that was dumb.
My, my travels will pop up.
Can I just ask, can I ask a question? So what's considered minimum notice for this? Is it, because if it was in the mosquito, and it was advertised on the Carla Pans Facebook page, I mean, minimum, and it's summertime, I know summertime, so people aren't wildly available, but I don't think if you push it to August, people are going to be more available in August, probably less available than they are now.
But part of it too is, we can reach out, so, I mean, Nathan and I know who, you know, which residents were concerned the last go-around, and we'll reach out specifically to those individuals, you know, because this is going to be.
Don't you see the mosquito too?
Yeah, I do too, but I didn't read this until I got my packet. I mean, I don't read the mosquito every week or every other, whenever it's even published now. I mean, it's, you know, it's summer, I travel for work, you know. I don't live in the center, but I haven't picked up a mosquito in probably two months, you know. So it's, it's, not everybody reads it, you know.
But that's not, I mean.
That's not our obligation.
No, it's not our obligation, right. But still, we, we had an issue in the past.
I understand.
We know the residents, and we can, you know, respectfully reach out to them.
Are we only reaching out to the residents that had negative feedback, though?
No, 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 it's not. And it wasn't negative feedback. It was just, it, the, the main thing was that they hadn't known. They just didn't know that it was going on.
So what's a better avenue for me to communicate to the Butters in general? Because if this, if these are the protocols, I mean, I can write them a letter or visit them personally too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I, you could.
I just think if there's a protocol for notice, and the protocol was met, even if it was minimum notice, then why isn't that sufficient? And why are we now saying, you know, depending on the time of year, and depending on if certain people weeded mosquito or not?
It will happen at that time.
It just seems that we're putting up a man of worms by doing this.
No, it's because of our experience in the past. I mean, you know, it, it's just, it's what we've experienced. And, and, you know, if even half of those individuals were here, I'd say, okay, you know, because what happens too is, you know, one person finds out about it, and they talk to the other people, and, you know, and you get a larger mass here. That, that's where my concern is. I mean, there are five people from the center here. And last time, it was, it was literally, it was a full house. So, you know, my general thinking, because even when I was coming to the meeting, I'm thinking, oh, boy, it's going to be packed. It's going to be a packed house. And it wasn't, so.
But no one's complained so far about any of the events he's had?
Not that we know of, no.
No.
But again, I think the board is supportive. It's just, it's just we want to get the adequate feedback, you know.
Going, going forward, does this, I mean, does it put into jeopardy, if anybody proposes anything, I mean, they can be told, we don't agree with, you followed all the protocols for notification, but we don't think it was enough. Like, so where does that lead?
I think that's, I agree.
Well, I, I, I'll just say that as a.
Right, this, right. Any board can vote, can vote to continue a hearing. I mean, planning board can do it, we can do it, cost company can do it. I mean, you can do that, especially if you think you don't have enough information. So that's what we're doing here. You know, I mean, it, it.
The purpose of a hearing is different than a meeting. The purpose of a hearing is to gather information, and if there are members that don't think that enough information has been gathered, the meeting has to be, the hearing has to be continued. And that does happen in hearings. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't happen.
So what happens if you continue the meeting to August, and, and no one shows up in August?
If we haven't had any letters, or, you know, emails, and people don't show up, I would say that we're going to act.
Right.
Yes.
But part of our responsibility too is to reach out. I mean, we are not just going to do nothing for the next month. You know, we'll make sure that the individuals that were here the last time they voiced concern get approached. And, you know, I mean, ultimately, you know, it's, it's, you know, you learn from your mistakes, and I think that's what we're trying to do here. We're not going to recreate an issue from the past, you know. And, and ultimately, you know, it all worked out fine, and we're just going to make sure that that happens again.
Do you have the same concerns about the deer, like the notification about the deer issue?
That's, that's another subject, and I think we'll discuss that at the time that we bring that up in our meeting.
Kind of similar, right? That you have citizens saying that not enough, that there isn't enough information.
I would agree with that.
I just think if there's a protocol, and the protocol was followed, is it really, I mean, I wouldn't expect the selectmen, if, if the protocol was followed, and notice was put in the paper, I wouldn't expect the selectmen to have to reach out to me to tell me that, to raise a concern with me, and sort of ask me to come to the meeting if I'm concerned. They should know that's their, I mean, the protocol is your publisher, and the newspaper, it was published in the newspaper. I don't think everyone in the center of town is away for the summer.
You know, I think our role is not just to follow the letter of the law. I think our role is also to assess whether some, whether a proposal is significant enough that it warrants us making a greater effort to make sure people are aware that it's going to happen, that they have an opportunity to participate if they choose to. And in this particular case, you know, it's, it's a, you know, fairly significant change. And I think it warrants making a significant, significant effort to allow people to come forward. And we're just talking about a month. So it's not that we're denying the, the permit or So it's not that we're denying the, the permit, or, you know, we're just allowing for more thorough notice and opportunity to participate.
Jonathan?
Jonathan DeCock, Open Mall Road. One thing that might give you a possible out on this is, I believe that a public hearing requires two notices in the newspaper, not just one. Tim, is that your understanding?
Not, not all hearings.
No, that's.
Planning board.
Planning board wants to do, but that's a little different, the stipulation for entertainment licenses is a ten day notification.
Is there anything about sending letters to the abutters?
That, that has been done.
Yeah.
But it's an immediate.
It's the, you know, the immediate abutters, we have the list under their.
Almost half of them are town to Carla.
Yeah.
In the town circle.
Five hundred feet?
Yeah, five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And none of those people are here?
Yeah, somebody's here. So we have a motion on the table, I don't remember whether it was seconded or not.
It was.
It was, okay, we've had further discussion.
Did we have a date though, did you say the twenty seventh?
Yes, it was twenty seventh, at seven thirty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So that's three to two, so it passes.
See you the twenty seventh, thank you.
We have the payroll approval for the fire department. And we had some questions last week, Chief Soros wrote us a memorandum. And I'd like to know if anybody has any.
No, no, no.
Further questions or concerns, or discussion, or what, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Well, I think the, the questions that we had have been reasonably answered in the letter that Chief Soros sent to us explaining why some of the, what looked like irregularities, or at least unusual sorts of things happened. So my questions certainly are answered.
Does anybody else have any questions that weren't answered?
Oh, well, I wasn't here for it, but I, I was just, I was struck by the fact that he's lowering some.
That's what the question was.
And I understand his reason, but then he says it wouldn't have a noticeable impact if he didn't do it, which seemed to be a question, you know, of, you know, if we would, if, if, if we wanted him to keep the pay rate the same rather than lowering it, he would be fine with that.
It seems odd to me to reduce somebody's pay rate. I, you know, I definitely can see you want to equalize things and make sure that they're the, the same, but usually you do that in future increase, potential increases, or you do it, you know, as there's change and things like that, not take something away from somebody that they already have it, and he seems to be suggesting that same thing.
But that's not what he's proposing.
That's not what he proposed.
No, but, but.
Read the note though.
But he's suggesting to please note, if they want to keep these change, these members at their, yeah, if they want to keep these members at their current rate, it won't have a noticeable impact on the budget. So that we could choose to change that part, you know, for the four members that don't have the EMT rate, but to leave them at that, at the rate.
EMTs.
Right.
So I think he's trying to rationalize.
Yeah.
The payment schedule.
Yeah.
And he is a new chief, and he wants to, you know, start from, with a clean slate, as far as I, from what I understood here, we did not ask him to make any of these changes, he proposed these changes, and I see no reason to ask him to not make these changes.
I thought maybe he was kind of giving us the opportunity to choose not to make those if we felt it was.
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary.
I, I think, I think he is, I, I think he believes it's the board's call whether you, you don't reduce anyone.
Yeah.
By his, his calculations, some go up, some go, you know.
Yeah.
But he, he believes it's the board's decision if, if you want to modify that in any way.
I think we have a proposal that he made, and we should either accept it or send it back to him.
I agree. As I said, we did not ask him to, to make that proposal. He asked, he, this is a proposal he made, all we asked was, you know, why did you do some of these things? And he made that decision on his own, and I'm not here to question that decision.
Right, and as a strong chief.
And as a strong chief, that is his decision.
Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, I wasn't here either, but, yeah, I mean.
Neither was he.
Well, he's, he hasn't come before the board.
He wasn't here either.
He's only been presenting this same spreadsheet and then.
Right, but he's, he has answered the questions that.
Which, the question was, how come, you know, there seem to be some changes up and down, we don't quite understand what they are, could you just let us know what has happened here? That, let us know.
And so what he's saying here is that the reason why they're being hired, that they're being paid higher than an EMT is because of the amount of time they've been on, right? And so he wants to bring them down to below an EMT because they're not EMTs.
Well, he needs coming in at another time and propose steps or something like that to, to reflect seniority, but it is, I agree with him frankly, it's inappropriate to pay somebody as an EMT if they are not in fact an EMT. So I think what he's doing is very rational.
Well, their abilities may justify a rate even higher than an EMT, they're not currently EMTs.
Then he can propose that.
Yeah, and, yes, exactly.
Exactly.
So, do we have a motion?
I move that the board approve the pay proposal from Chief Soros as outlined in the enclosure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just mention one, sorry, but I, one thing I noted, and it, it's just, maybe it's something to talk to him about separately, whoever, you know, is the liaison there, but where he describes in the second bullet and the third bullet about that somebody should, to move them from entry level cap into the mid level, and he, and he uses the phrase, because he's been in his position for long enough, and then the, the line below it, moving somebody from the entry level to firefighter six, he said he's been in his position long enough. And is there, is there any performance evaluation that he does, or, or is this, is this just typical, that it's sort of a, what sounds to me like kind of a subjective, you know.
There are credentials they get, and that's what determines what level they're at, for things that aren't appointed officer positions and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
It goes by whatever, whatever their training is.
Okay, so he doesn't really specify that.
That's right.
But, okay.
Had he said, and he, he's been there, you know.
Yeah, okay.
requisite amount of time and has gotten the certificates needed for moving.
Right, with the, the, one at the bottom, it's clear, because he says he now has X certification, and, okay, just a comment, maybe.
So I think as, as liaison, what I'm going to talk to him about is putting these in front before we come, you know, before the fiscal year starts. I mean, it, it shouldn't be, I'm going to, going to move this COLA money around in order to give people adjustments. People should know what the adjustments in the levels are, and they should know when they might go into it, and that should be more of a process rather than sitting down with a spreadsheet and making the adjustments, and that, that's, that's my concern about this. It seems kind of an after the fact, let me make these adjustments, you know, I'm assuming the people know, I mean, he and I didn't talk about this when I met with him a week ago last Saturday.
Hopefully he's talked to his firefighters about this, it's surprising to them.
I hope so.
Yeah, me too.
Has, has Brian provided a revised budget?
Not yet.
Yeah, he hasn't, okay. I'm assuming all of these adjustments, I mean, he says it, you know, no impact to the fire department budget, but, you know, there was a lot of wiggle room, shall we say, in the salary line, so, I think when we had talked with him, you know, when, right as he came on as chief, part of the plan was to get a true, a more true budget, so, yeah, maybe.
I think this may be actually an attempt.
A, a start, yeah, no, I, I hope so. Yeah, I think that, I think it's great, because, yeah, it's been a, an interesting budget for the past few years.
Yes, yes. Indeed, so we have a motion on the table in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, no abstentions, that was unanimous. Okay, we're running a little ahead of schedule. We can have the discussion of the complete streets committee charge. So, we, thank you for submitting this draft.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
I'm going to kick off the discussion by just letting you know that we have lost five out of our five members on the pathways, three of them have moved out of town, and two decided not to re-up. So what I propose is that we just let that poor baby die, and we kind of incorporate that into our complete streets thing, because, and I think it's very easy to do anywhere where we say, and in fact, your first sentence of the complete streets committee says, ensuring pedestrian and vehicle safety, right there. And then I would just say, one of the focuses in the next paragraph, one of the focus, committee focuses is the implementation of, and I was wondering if we wanted to put the state approved complete street projects, or not, I don't know. And then further down, adding, you know, integrated transportation and pedestrian networks, and balance all transportation and pedestrian needs, just keep on.
Yeah, well, so that's the thing, you know, when, when I drafted this, the idea was that we were going to have a complete streets committee, they were only going to focus on complete streets, right? But, I mean, I, you know, I, I do think it makes sense if we are going to have to do a new pathways committee, right? To really just integrate all of it, yeah.
Because a complete streets has pathways integrated into it as well, so it's, it's almost.
Yeah, yeah, the idea was.
Labor.
Right, the idea was just that the complete streets committee would go after complete streets grant and grants and implement the, that, but, you know, in the grand scheme of things, we don't have enough volunteers to do seven different committees, right? So, and then, I don't know, did you see Melinda sent an email today?
About, a couple people, yes.
Yeah, but all, but also too, a part of that was that, you know, one of the, and this was what I had thought earlier on too, is the reason that there were two separate ones is because there were different funding sources that, that the, that the committees went after. But I don't think there's any restriction that, that, you know, would withhold us from, or prevent us from combining those two, right? So it's just a matter of knowing which sources.
The energy task force, for instance, goes after a whole bunch of sources, you know, I mean, just because it's one committee doesn't mean that they should be limited to one source, funding source.
No, exactly.
So I'm just going to start by saying, I'm terrified about this project now because we've lost everybody. And, you know, so.
Not complete streets, no, not complete streets, just pathways, yeah.
Pathway committee.
Just pathway committee.
Complete streets, I'm looking, there's nobody from the board selectmen, nobody from, so do we have any citizens at large for complete streets?
Well, but, yeah, complete streets, so it was, I was the rep, and then the TSAC member, I think was Deb, right?
Okay, but, okay, so let's, before we get to that part.
Let me finish what I was going to say, if I may. So i- isn't this an awful lot of overlap, not only with pathways, but also with the traffic safety advisory committee?
Exactly, that's what I was going to say.
Should we just have one committee? And maybe increase the size of that one, because so many of the committee members on, you know, if, if I look at this complete streets, most of the people, well, all the names who are in here, and I, and I'm only aware of one person who's going to be fit in here, and that's Luke, they're all employees, so we can't expect that they're doing the work, right? Because they have other jobs in the town.
Right.
And so we have nobody to manage the grant and the construction project for complete streets. Our only chance is to take all three, which don't have anybody who's not a town employee already, and combine them into one, and try to figure out how we can solve, I mean, this, I, I think this should be our number one priority, this is a lot of money that may just go away because we don't have anybody who can do the work right now.
Right, yeah, I agree. So, I mean, that was going to be my other thing, I.
And you're never here, Luke.
You didn't think you'd get away without some comment, did you?
Thanks for the dart.
I have to say that when I looked at the voting members, it really seemed, you know, like it's going to be the traffics, one traffic safety advisory committee and the traffic safety advisory committee, because the traffic safety advisory committee is the chief of police, and.
Everybody listed.
It's everybody listed, so I mean, it's redundant, so I think if we had one sec, one selectman, the traffic safety advisory committee.
Or just incorporate the traffic.
Yeah, just make it all one committee.
Just one committee. Just say, hey, Luke, rewrite this, it's to one committee for all three.
Okay, so in other words, we retitled this to traffic, that we, what we just.
Traffic Issues Committee.
We've just rewritten the traffic safety committee charge?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I mean, it could just be a traffic and pedestrian safety committee, right?
Right.
I mean, then it, then it kind of.
And it's not just about the center of town, it's everywhere.
Everywhere in town, yep.
And then we need to get people on this committee.
Safety.
When, when do we have to start?
There's actually a kickoff meeting with our engineer next week.
Oh, and who's going to be there?
I invited it.
Could I ask you, Ken, what you're going to call this?
Traffic and pedestrian safety committee.
Thank you.
Until the next time we go.
It rolls off the tongue, yeah.
We do need.
You don't have a quorum of this meeting, if you only have Luke.
That's right, because you need to, well, yes, we do, because the, we'd have the DPW, the voting members are the.
Yeah, they're all.
DPW, the chief of police and fire chief, one selectman.
Some others, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a quorum. The non-voting members of town.
So there's four.
So get rid of, not, we get rid of this pathways committee member, now, so the question is, why do we, why do we lose these non-voting members, I guess is the question.
So, you know, Tim obviously has the responsibility to manage the RFPs and the contracts and all of that, and then, yeah, the pathways committee, obviously, if we're going to incorporate it in, they would be, they would become a member, and also too, I think we've had Jan, Neil, yeah, so.
Jan's been part of it.
Right, so that was another part.
So why couldn't she be one of the two community stakeholders?
She could, yeah, no, she could.
And why don't we ask her if she would be willing to, and then we've killed two birds with one stone, we have a representative from the master planning who's, who.
So that's, isn't she leading the master planning?
She is.
So she'd be leading the master planning and a half a million dollar construction project in the middle of town.
You think that's too much?
Yeah.
Well, she's, she wouldn't be leading, she'd just be a member.
But you know, the.
But this can be a lot of work though.
Yeah, it's going to be a ton of work.
The master planning committee has more members on it, and there's also the master planning advisory committee, which according to Jan, there are a lot of people that want to be doing something, now, I know this is a little different than master planning, but.
But it's part of it.
Yeah, but it'd be a, a, you know, good.
She has to be involved, but, so she knows, I mean, if she'd rather have someone else from the committee go in instead, she could do that.
Well, once, once we decide what this committee is going to be named, and, and how many members we're going to have, we can, we can advertise for volunteers to be on.
Right. So.
As of a traffic engineer.
Seven, we have seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Transportation research.
Plus the town administrator.
It could be five.
He's just kind of like.
So I don't think five is going to do it, honestly, because, you know, maybe I'm overreacting, but this, you know, it's a very short timeframe construction project that's going to require a lot of oversight, three of the people here are really not going to be able to do that much of that. So if you have it only five, then you have Luke and one other person basically managing the project.
Or Luke and two other people, who have two.
Well, we were just saying if, if it was only five.
Yeah.
Oh, it's only five people.
Right, that was the, what was just proposed. I think we want it to be seven, and then just start begging.
We have an S seven here.
I know, I was just responding to what somebody said.
Yeah, I'm going to text David now.
So should we go with the seven that are listed on Luke's original?
We have a hand up out there, just pointing out, Kate.
One, two, three, four, five, six, we need one more person, because this, these, this is the traffic safety advisory committee.
Yep. Well, there's a couple others.
Who, who else was on it?
Deb Land.
Oh, she's not, she's gone. Right, what I meant was, that it is, this is the remaining. Right, what I meant was, that it is, this is the remaining members, okay? So, what about those two people that Melissa?
Yeah, Melinda sent.
Sorry, Melinda sent us.
I didn't get that.
Yeah, no, I think she just sent it to.
But, we don't, we don't, we don't, we aren't gonna propose specific people tonight, right? We're just trying to determine the number.
But, if we have people in mind, it's easier to, you know, we don't wanna.
We have to at least put Luke on it, though, so he can meet next week.
Right. Because what I would suggest is that we go with one selectman, the DPW Director, the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and then, three community stakeholders, right? Because we're merging the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee into this, right? So, that doesn't get listed as a separate one. So, you have three community stakeholders. We see if Jan wants to do it, or has a recommendation of somebody else from the Master Planning Committee, and maybe encourage her to suggest somebody else rather than herself. And then, two other people, if we think it's important to have somebody from the Planning Board, we could, we could.
Be great if we had somebody with some construction experience, like, you know, maybe Lee Storrs.
Or a traffic engineer, traffic engineers are always good. Hey, the town's gotta have one.
Don't we get, don't we get that in the census?
Yeah, the, the noisy book, yeah.
So, so we could say.
Yeah, did she actually send, did she forward those emails?
David already responded, no, thanks.
Damn!
Jonathan, did you have a suggestion?
He's coming later for the plan review discussion.
Sue and Vishy, except that they don't, I don't have their.
Tell them we've appointed them to the committee.
You already had it.
Sunta Rollingham. Vishnavi.
Oh, sure, I, I.
And Sue Pietro Paolo.
Oh, yeah, I know them both.
They're on Master Planning.
Those are suggestions.
I'm gonna, you know what, I'm gonna forward these to everybody. Jonathan.
Jonathan needs another committee, right?
He's gonna be busy.
Okay, so, just to move this, to move this along, so, do we think we wanna identify, we wanna designate somebody from the Planning Board, or make it three community stakeholders, and ideally, get somebody from the Planning Board, and maybe somebody else with the construction experience?
I'd say leave it unspecified, but we can target.
Leave it unspecified, so how about, we don't need to make a motion, do we? Can't we just give this back to Luke to rewrite?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, no, I definitely think it makes more sense, I mean, you know, the fewer committees, the better, but, but also, too, if there's gonna be that, a lot of redundancy. Well, it's probably gonna change even more dramatically, unless if we're incorporating TSAC, right?
Right, but, anyway, there's, you've got, you've got the same thing I do. And Pat, yes, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, all right. Once we get that organized and going, I keep on getting queries from the garden club saying, let us know when it's gonna happen, because we have to move our pots, and, you know, things like that, so.
Yeah, so the kickoff meeting is, what, next Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
So, yeah, are, are they gonna put an agenda together, are they gonna?
Yeah, I think they wanna talk about the timetable and, you know, design elements, yeah.
So, Luke, will you try to reach out to a few people before then, and see if you can recruit somebody else to come to the meeting?
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Even if they're not a voting member yet, but.
Even if they're not a member, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah.
We've invited the sort of informal working group that's been handling Complete Streets, there's about six or seven people on the email list, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not gonna lose that, right, so we won't lose that.
Continuity?
Continuity, thank you, yeah. But, yeah, I think, you know, with, with a lot of folks moving out of town, yeah, I think, I think we're gonna have to bring in some new people, and now's the time, right? So, right at the beginning, it'll be, already into it, and have them go, oh, wait, why'd you do that?
Okay. We have a discussion of the Deer Committee Charter, bow hunting regulations. What I'm going to do is, I do want to ask Barney, who was at the last meeting, to explain why she asked for this to come onto our agenda tonight.
Okay.
I have just.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is our meeting, I'm asking one of my committee members to give us a report.
So, the Deer Control Committee Charter, which is the first thing, is, you know, I had volunteered to rewrite it, and I, I'm now part of the Deer Control Committee, and we have met a couple of times, and reviewed it, and agreed on this wording, and so I'm submitting it to the Board for approval. The larger issue, I think, is the, the bow hunting regulation. So, let me tell you our thinking about how we were, why we wanted to do, why we wanted to get it on the Board of Selectmen agenda for tonight. We're working backwards from when we need to have the regulations in place, the approval from the Board of Selectmen and the CONSCOM, because some of the land is under the control of the CONSCOM. We wanted to have that in place in time for the applications that we wanted to open up for those that wanted to hunt in this season, which is proposed to begin, I believe it's the beginning of October. So, working back from that, what we wanted to do was, we wanted to draft some regulations, which we have done over the last couple of meetings, and wanted to then have different boards in town review it, including the Board of Selectmen, not to vote to approve it tonight, but to review it, so we could get some input from the Board of Selectmen, and then also have the various other boards that need to review it, the CONSCOM, the Board of Health, run by the Trails Committee. And then, we also wanted to make sure we have a community input session, which has been scheduled for a week from Wednesday. So, we set all this up, and it happened very quickly, because we didn't have the Deer Committee up and running. It's, I guess, after town meeting, basically, it, it sort of, you know, stopped meeting. This was before I ended up on the committee, but, so it was reconstituted, or began meeting again just maybe three weeks ago. So, this is all moving fairly quickly, if we wanna make the schedule of meeting the timeframe for the applications to be made available to the hunters. So, that's why, after we had our Deer Committee meeting on Wednesday, and we made, did some final tweaking to these draft regulations, I wrote to you all, Tim and Kate, about, could we get it on the agenda for tonight? Now, my apologies, as a new person, I didn't, I, you know, I mean, we couldn't move, have moved any faster, given that we didn't have the draft regulations till Wednesday night, but I didn't understand the electronic posting versus the, you know, paper posting, and so I can understand the concern about that. But, it's, it's for a perfectly reasonable reason that we're trying to do the schedule this way. So, is that, I don't know if that's enough of an explanation, and if anybody wants to comment, but.
I think certainly, under our agenda item of Board Committee, Committee of Amendments, we can discuss the Deer Control Committee Charter.
Yeah.
And approve that. I think it's good to have these other, these draft regulations available. There is one real big typo right there, between nine, one and nine, nine one.
Actually, that's on purpose, but we could get to that when we.
Oh, is that was one of the things that you needed?
It's an either-or, yeah.
Us to discuss?
Either-or proposal, yeah, but, just let me make it clear, the intent tonight is not to have the Board of Selectmen approve these as the regulations going forward. The intent tonight is to have, as it says on the agenda, discuss it.
Madam Chair, for the record, it was properly posted with the town clerk and.
No, and it was properly, and it is, absolutely.
Yeah, there was no funny business with the posting.
So, I am proposing that we will discuss the Deer Control Committee Charter tonight. People have, have a chance to read the draft regulations for bow hunting and deer on Cala Time Land.
I guess, I just wanna, I guess, I just wanna go on record, and not to be difficult, for the same reason as what we just put Matt Hurwick through. I would, I would just like to propose that we don't discuss it. I think that it was very last minute, it was changed. We know that there's.
Don't discuss the charter, or don't discuss the regulations?
Yeah, don't discuss, don't discuss what we put on the, I mean, where they both put on, on Friday.
At the same time, yeah.
You know, and I realize that, you know, two people here, you know, the minimum was fine, and obviously, lots of time, the minimum is fine, I just think that when, when there is something that is contentious, you know, just pushing, 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 I think just causes problem. We're here to represent what people, you know, and get input, and, you know, and for that reason, I think that I would be not consistent in my arguments tonight, if I were to support talking about this, and.
About the charter as well.
About, both of the things that are on the agenda, because it's not a, what, you know, it's a, was it on the agenda, you know, was it, you know?
Yeah.
I think people could reasonably expect, and I realize that it, you know, it delays things, but, you know, it's the same argument that I made before, and so I have a hard time, I wouldn't make the argument if I felt that it was something really was just not contentious, but we know this one is contentious.
Yeah.
We know that there are people who are passionate about it. I support this, the same way as I supported Matt, but I just wanna make sure that people are heard, and, and they don't feel like we're just railroading this through. That's just my opinion.
I guess I disagree with you, because we also have a right to be heard. This is our committee, which is looking for our direction, that really, you know, and especially, when we're talking about the, their charter, that's not the regulations, it's their charter. You know, it was properly posted, and it's something that we have to have a, an opportunity to discuss. Doesn't necessarily mean we'll make any decisions tonight, but we have to have an opportunity to discuss it. We discussed, Mr., you know, the ferns thing tonight, we didn't make a decision, but we had a chance to discuss it.
Oh, I thought we were gonna decide on the Deer Control Committee charge tonight.
No, we're going to discuss it, I'd like to be able to read it and discuss it.
I was, you were hearing me say yes, I was thinking we would vote on the Deer Control Committee Charter, but I'm totally fine with just discussing that, as well as the regulations, just getting some input, and then, that wouldn't normally go to the other boards for review, so we can just, but we'll review it tonight, and then we can wait till an appropriate meeting to approve it.
Kind of the same thing we did then, we continued the hearing after talking about it.
That's right.
I, I was stuck on, I thought it was on the agenda, and we were gonna vote on it.
No.
No.
No, it was never intended that way.
We need to have time to discuss things.
The regulations, yeah.
Just like everybody else in the world.
But, no, I think you make a good point, we, if we were trying to make a decision, it wouldn't be appropriate, I'd agree with that. But, so let's, let's.
And it wasn't, yes.
So, you wanna start with the, are people comfortable with going ahead, as the board, going ahead to just discuss what we have here?
Yeah, I have no issue discussing, yeah.
I would like to discuss the.
Charter?
Charter first, because that kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Tells us what this committee is supposed to do. And one of, the DCC is responsible on a yearly basis for the development and implementation of regulations, including their enforcement to govern bow hunting program on town-owned land in Cala. So, that's what this is, the, the.
Regulations.
The regulations are. They're gonna appoint a deer agent, and on a yearly basis.
We are gonna appoint a deer agent.
We, we recommend.
Oh, sorry, we would appoint the deer agent.
So, just, should we read this out loud?
Okay.
Just as, you know, just because people are listening in, and we're kinda just summarizing?
The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Deer Control Committee, DCC, to administer a pilot bow hunting for deer program on designated town-owned land. The DCC is responsible for collecting information about deer hunting programs in other towns from nearby land trusts and other relevant agencies, such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The DCC is responsible on a yearly basis for the development and implementation of regulations, including their enforcement, to govern a bow hunting program on town-owned land in Cala. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a deer agent to assist with the bow hunting program, who shall be a member of the DCC. On a yearly basis, these regulations shall be reviewed by the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, any additional holders of a conservation restriction on land proposed for bow hunting, and the Board of Selectmen. The opportunity for community input shall be provided yearly, and the regulations revised as needed, based on input from these boards, organizations, and the public. Every year, prior to the beginning of bow hunting for deer on town-owned land, a final set of regulations, including the timeline of the bow hunting season, must be submitted to the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission for final approval. And then, it goes on to list some members, seven members.
Thank you.
I think that sounds like a pretty good process.
I didn't have any changes to propose.
Who wrote that one?
Yeah.
I was wondering.
Would you like to do Complete Streets?
And you are planning.
Oh, is it, you wrote this one?
I did, yeah.
Oh, perfect, okay.
But, no, with a lot of input from the Deer Committee.
And you are planning on going before the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and us, and then.
Coming back with the final.
Coming back with the final. Well, first with the draft.
Yes.
Then, given the input you're getting from all those things.
Yeah.
Redesign it and make a final draft, including a public hearing, or a public.
Input session.
Input session for public.
Yep.
And that is already, that's a week on Wednesday.
Yeah, and notice has gone out about it.
For those who want to put public input to the.
And these will be the regulations that they see for comment at that point.
Right, correct. And have, with no changes from us, in other words, these are the, the regulations that you're planning to, you would not plan to change, let's say we had a change today, or.
Yeah.
You would not incorporate those changes yet, you're gonna, you're still on the information, information gathering.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause what, looking at Jonathan, 'cause he's the chair of the committee, so we're, yeah, the idea would be, we collect input, and then, we're meeting after the community input session, right, to, to take in what we've, the feedback we've gotten, to do, to make any revisions, am I right, thinking about the timeline?
Yes, I'm just wondering, do you want me to speak as the Deer Chair?
I'd certainly.
If I don't wanna violate any protocols by speaking out of turn.
Pre-heat talk, I do have just one question, if I could, about this. So, it says, "On a yearly basis, these regulations will be reviewed by the Board of Health, the Conservation Committee, and any additional stakeholders of a conservation restriction on land proposed for bow hunting, and the Board of Selectmen." Okay, that all makes sense, we all have to review them on a set schedule. What's the mechanism for any comments getting back to somebody? But also, that's one question, and then, "The opportunity for community input shall be provided yearly," is it those groups that are getting together? Who is providing the opportunity? Is it the Deer Committee, or is it the Board of Selectmen, or is it Joint Board of Selectmen and Deer? Because there was some confusion last year, and like, who's on first? And I think I spurred that, because for some reason, I thought it was CONSCOM, and clearly, it's not, and I was just wrong, but.
Now, you're an expert, you already made that mistake.
If it only worked that way.
I'm an expert in many mistakes.
No, I think the idea is, we're saying the Deer Control Committee would be responsible, but maybe it needs to be clarified.
I think it just needs to be highlighted, that it's, you know, and what is the mechanism? Like, is, maybe there's a date, right? Maybe there's a date that on a, on a yearly basis, no, you know, with, report no later than X-date, each of the committees should be doing this, which presumably means they're, they're talking about it, that's posted on their public hearing meetings, and, and we know about when it's gonna happen, because they need to have it, because they need to know when they have to have it to, to the committee by, right?
Yeah, because prior to the beginning of. Yeah, because prior to the beginning of the bow hunting.
Right.
And if that's gonna be in October, it has to be certain number of-
Way prior, right? Cause we're, we're talking now that we have to move forward in July.
Right, no, in, in an, in ideal situation-
Sit down and borrow-
We'd, we'd already discussed on the committee that we needed to start this process.
I think we just need to give them a timeline, each of those committees a timeline, you know, please, even if there's no comment, just send us something so that we, send us, meaning you guys, um, something just so that you know that it's done and you're ready to move forward with the public input.
Okay, I guess, I was supposing you guys were gonna make presentations to all those committees or-
Yeah.
Yeah, just as you're doing here tonight.
Yes, so we discussed exactly that, putting a timeline in the charter. However, this year was so compressed that the proper timeline would have already been passed by the time we put it in, right? So, what we wanted to do was basically say, this is the charter for this year, and once we get through all the crunch time of getting this hunting season over with, then we want to essentially begin drafting the regulations for next year in the winter, including updating the charter, and in that, we can actually spell out a proper timeline for when the deer control committee needs to do what and when we're gonna have what inputs. Now, personally speaking, as the, the chair of the deer committee, I'm not planning on having just one input session this year. We're having one to go over these regulations, but I think we're gonna run a lot of them just to, I, I want a venue for the public to tell us what's not going right or what is going right, and I'm perfectly happy with having many of these. So, we just need to get enough members of the deer control committee to form a quorum so that we can actually have a meeting. But everyone is very well invested in this, and so I think we won't have that much difficulty doing that.
And you'll be doing all the public input sessions.
Yes, how, so the-
Apparently this thing doesn't like me. You wore it out.
So, yes, uh, I consider it the deer control committee's responsibility to set those up. Um, I would love to have as many of the Board of Selectmen there, um, as possible, but I don't know that you guys are required. So, but if you wanted to make it a, a joint session where we both hear the same public input, um, that would be great. I did arrange for the one on the 31st to be taped, um, and so if you can't make it, you can watch it later.
I applaud your proposal to have multiple meetings. Uh, however, you need to look at the regulations. You can have a venue meeting after that as you want in terms of how we doing, you know, progress reports along the way, and it's critically important that the, that the public have good input in, before the regulations are finalized, so that we know how they feel and, and we can react to them as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Which is why, I guess what I'm saying is, um, I think these, these have been in our pa- packet, they're already a public document.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think I would change anything before you have your public-
No, we, we can't, we don't have any more meetings.
Talking about the same document.
Yep, that's exactly what we're doing. The Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Trails Committee, um, you guys and the public are all seeing this exact thing.
Okay.
And so, that's, that's what we're gonna be taking public input on, um, as well as input from the various boards. We have a meeting on August 2nd where we're gonna take all of that input and incorporate it into the draft regulations, send them all back out to the various boards, and then at your next available meeting after that, we are gonna need approval, okay? And that's just because, you know, what with town meeting and not getting people onto the deer committee until the beginning of July, we're running a really compressed schedule here, and so we're, we're trying to accommodate that.
Are you gonna poll people about this 9.1, about this either or?
Yes, we're polling everyone, all the committees, we polled the hunters, we're gonna poll the community input, um, we, we want input and not just, not just a vote of, you know, yes, I like this one, or I like this one, or I like both, or I like neither, but why, right? Because I think the why is really important.
And just, just because this is being taped, maybe you should or I-
So, so 9.1 and 9.2, I forget which is which, but one is to, uh, prevent hunting between the hours of 10 and 2. Um, and so just for the record, I'm the Trails Committee representative on the deer committee, and so this is geared largely towards users of the property who are commonly trail users, and so it's, do the trail users or the users of the property want to be using the property, you know, without any worry that there's hunting going on in this time slot, or do we want to restrict Saturdays? And so, you know, we, we have a mission to, uh, to, you know, to manage the deer herd, so we need to be, have hunting during some periods of time, but we can restrict it in some reasonable set of ways. So, we're looking for input on which of these two possibilities should we select? And we don't wanna select both, that would be, I think, too much. So, uh, as I under, as I had just learned tonight, you guys do not have a meeting on the 13th. The deer committee was counting on that to receive your next input, so I'm going to ask that, uh, if we, if you don't give us input on the regulations tonight, at least you've seen them all, can you please email either Barney or me directly? Don't email everyone, cause that's a violation of open meeting law, but if you can email us, this is what I do or don't like about what you've proposed, then that will allow us to incorporate it.
Excellent.
Okay?
From an informational standpoint, do people hunt between 10 and 2 normally? When I had deer hunters on my land-
It's-
They were there from 5:00 in the morning until 7:00, not 10 till 2:00.
No, so usually the deer are more active during, um, you know, the dusk and dawn hours, and so most deer hunting occurs in the beginning and the end of the day. Um, and that's why this is a reasonable proposal, because the only time when deer hunters tend to want to be hunting the full day is during the rut, which is about a two-week period, and rather than complicate the regulations by saying 10 to 2, except for these two weeks, we're, just forget it, 10 to 2, blanket. So, uh, based on what we're proposing this year, we'll either select one or the other. We're not gonna select both, I don't think. There is the possibility that we'll select neither, right? If, if we get enough negative feedback on both of them. And you should be aware that the reason we're extending the season is to compensate for the time lost on one of these two, because we still need to, to, you know, harvest the deer. Okay? So.
I think you did a great job in incorporating the concerns.
I agree.
Yeah, we tried to take the feedback that you gave us at the last meeting very seriously and get, you know, get the public input, come up with reasonable solutions and get them into the regs.
It's clear that you did.
Yeah, so, and, uh, I hope you're also happy with the enforcement. That, um, that should work. We, uh, we initially were much more draconian about that, just so you know, um, and we decided we better tone it back a little bit because you should have some opportunity for the deer hunter who has made a mistake to explain what their extenuating circumstances were and not just cut him off completely. So, um, so we think we've done that. So, last year, as I understand it, I wasn't part of it, but last year, as I understand it, there were two, uh, violations of the regulations. Um, one was that, uh, a hunter put up, um, his stand on private property instead of on townland, and the other was that I think two hunters, um, left the entrails of the deer where they were instead of taking them out like they're supposed to. And both of those in the future would be complete dismissal from the program forever. So, we-
What happened instead?
Uh, we didn't have an enforcement provision last year, which was an oversight in last year's regulations, and so they were, uh, they were told not to do it again, basically. And they were both very, very sorry and now understand that this is not acceptable.
Yeah, so how does that work, Tim? So now it's a public document.
They can post, post them on-
Yeah, I think they'll be posted with the, so I haven't posted the agenda yet for the July 31st meeting, but I believe when I post the agenda for the July 31st meeting, that's, they'll definitely be in, in that.
And Priscilla, should I send a copy to a mosquito? Yeah, cause I had talked with, um-
There you go.
Betsy about doing that.
A second copy.
You want that?
I have a question. There is no way to contact the deer committee on the website? Is there a, can we generate a, if no one wants to use your name, can we generate a generic, uh, name like deercommittee@carlisle.com so that inputs for people who can't make meetings can go, be sent to there?
Uh, yes, um, I plan to put that on the agenda for our August 2nd meeting so that the deer committee can discuss what we should do about that. So thank you for that input.
The best thing to do if you're doing it that way is to put your name and your address just so that they know that you're a Carlisle resident and-
Oh, yeah, no, this is, so, so right now, the only way the deer committee has to receive input is through the conservation administrator. And so they would like to be able to send it directly to the deer control committee, and we don't have, uh, a general email alias for that. It didn't seem to me appropriate to have me put my personal email on that, so I asked, I like-
I almost have made that mistake.
So, so I have, so it's just so you know, so far I've been to the town clerk and asked what the process is to get one of these set up, and so now I know that, but I can't just unilaterally make a decision to create one, I need to go back to the committee and say, shall we do this? And so that's, our next available meeting to discuss it is August 2nd.
But in the short one, if somebody can't make the input session, could they choose to send something to Tim?
The, the conservation administrator, so, so Sylvia or Mary can receive stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, and they will get it to me.
Thank you very much.
The board should also appoint Officer Drew Corwin to the committee and, uh, instead of Sergeant Scott Barnes, who's no longer able to participate, so the chief, talk to Drew and he's happy to do it.
Yeah, okay, so I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint, um, Detective Drew Corwin?
Mm-hmm.
Drew Corwin, uh, to be the representative of the police department on the deer control committee, replacing Officer Scott Barnes.
Second.
Second, yep.
Uh, for a term of one year, I'm sorry.
All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Can I go back a topic? Did we actually appoint Luke to?
Yes, we did that a long time ago.
Okay. His name wasn't on that list, so.
Several, several times ago for some reason, I don't know why we-
Can we just do it again and then he has to work twice as hard?
He talked about the, uh, actually, we have to reappoint him because we don't have a Complete Streets, um, committee anymore, so we'll, we probably will have to reappoint him after we have a committee.
Yeah, once the new charter is-
Once the new charter is, yeah.
But is there a committee charter that it's operating under now, or should we just ask him to put together a working group to have this discussion with, uh, the company?
The engineer? Yeah, I, it, it's, in effect, it's a working group because we have an appoint, the board hasn't appointed a formal committee.
Right.
So those people are all invited to the kickoff meeting.
What we have to say is, hey, Tim, can you deal with-
We can formalize the committee as we get into it, yeah.
So we should officially do that.
So it is written, so. Movie is that.
Okay, um, policy and guideline review, updates from board members, um, actually all of-
I'm sorry, I was just gonna suggest, I know David's here to talk about the first item in my town administrator's report, maybe we could-
Okay.
Take that out of order.
Thank you.
I haven't seen him in so long.
I saw him, I mean, I just didn't-
Wasn't to be on the Complete Streets Committee.
I'll text them, see if we can at least make time.
Yeah, so are you in the Complete Streets Committee now? He's the chair?
No.
All right, then you're gonna have to wait your turn.
Yeah.
So, um, David Friedman, and I'm, I'm here as the, I don't know, de facto coordinator of the working group that Tim put together to work on the Public Safety Communication System. And I was here two meetings ago, I think, um, to explain the change we were making to build a new tower west of 1022 Westford because the, um, lease that was being proposed from the tower owner, um, was such that, um, it didn't make financial sense to, to do that. It would, it makes more sense and it'll pay for itself in a fairly short time to build our own tower, um, on a town-owned, tax-taking parcel that is quarter mile or so west of that location and has been given the address of 1110 Westford Street. And you all gave your assent to do that with the understanding that the short-term cost was not for that and everything else in the, um, proposed, um, public safety system was not covered by the appropriation that Town Meeting made two years ago and that we would need to get an additional appropriation to cover that. We, as I explained then, there are enough items that we can postpone until we have those funds such that we can fund this new tower, um, but at some point, we need to address when we're going to ask the town for the funds to complete that process. And the best time would be a special town meeting this fall and something to, to talk about, and, um, it takes time to plan that, and, and if you do decide to do that, then we would, we, this group would work with you to pull together the numbers for what we would be asking for. Part of that process has to do with looking at the actual expenses versus budget up to this point, and also the expectations as to when things need to be paid for the work that's ongoing, um, and, and then to put dollar amounts to the things that we've postponed, since we don't wanna go to town meeting and saying that we're building this tower even though we didn't have money for it, we're just reallocating the funds we have to, to do that. So, given your assent to do that, we proceeded with an application on your behalf, the Selectmen's behalf, um, to the planning board for site plan review, which is required for this type of development, and also with, um, CONSCOM for notice of intent. The CONSCOM hearing was last week, and they are, um, approved it with conditions which will be drafted, um, they haven't closed the hearing, but they, they've approved it, and we've gotten approvals. The part of site plan review is a referral to all of various relevant boards in town, and, um, essentially all of them have given their feedback except for Board of Health, which meets tomorrow night. My expectation, given their feedback on the previous towers, is that they, there's no Board of Health issues there. Um, the Board of Selectmen is one of the groups that gets this request for comment, and even though it's your application, I think it would be helpful for the Selectmen to provide in the next day or so, um, or to direct Tim to provide a memo from you to the planning board stating that you support the application and, I mean, acknowledging it's your own application, but you support the application and that you have no, um, issues with the site plan that was distributed to you all.
I think you're gonna have to paint it a brighter color so that we can see it a little better. It's very invisible unless you're standing way off in the field and-
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it is, it is above the, the tree line and-
Yeah, but not, I mean, from, from these depictions, it's not-
Yeah, I mean, it's really the, the one location where you-
We're near as noticeable as the one in the sorely field.
That'd be a lot less noticeable than the sorely tower, isn't it?
Um, yeah, I mean, generally speaking, when you're driving on the highway, you don't see these unless you're looking for them because you're paying it, you're paying it out to the road. What we don't know from these photo simulations, cause they're done at the height of summer, is there'll be somewhat less leaf cover in the, um, but CONSCOM has asked for planting some shrubs in an area that's being cleared to provide access to, for the vehicles that are gonna be working on it, um, and so that's being included with the plan. Well, there, this is just the view from the streetscape.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Cause from, from the road, except from-
This doesn't look like you would be able to see it.
Except from the sorely field, um, I think it will be relatively, you know, I mean-
Even then, it's behind a bunch of trees.
Yeah.
The bulk of it is, yes, it sticks out above.
I mean, it sticks above, and I mean, that's why shrub, shrubs are gonna probably scrape down.
So, to the degree, um, any of you sort of looked at the, um, the coverage maps and stuff, the, if you spend too much time looking at them, it looks like you get pretty close to the same coverage at 110 feet versus 130, um, but the cost difference between, uh, cause ba, essentially all the same costs are there except the last section of the tower. Um, the difference in cost is like $9,000 out of $200,000, um, or- The difference in cost is like $9,000 out of $200,000 or more than that.
I think we had discussed that last time. We thought it would be a false economy to not.
Right, well, we didn't, I didn't have the coverage plots at that time. But yes, that was, that was the theory and, and so we're basically proceeding at 130, which is what the, all our public safety officials believe is the prudent thing to do.
Are these coverage plots just theoretical? They didn't actually do a test?
It's, they're not a, no, it's, I mean, they're, I'm not sure theoretical is the right word, but they're, they're based on a model and the model is based on actual stuff.
They didn't put a balloon up?
No, and, and actually, the balloon, the reason you'd put a balloon up would be more to be sure that the photo sim is really getting where that is, because that's somewhat of an estimate. But part of the contract is, at the end of the whole thing, once it's functioning, there will be a drive test and that drive test is what Motorola is guaranteeing coverage based on. And so there will be something other than these simulations that will.
At least, or UHF?
I'm not prepared to answer that question, it's.
Some definitely are, because it says UHF at the top.
Yeah. I have information about frequencies and, and that sort of thing I, I get as I need going into the meeting and forget as soon as I, as I leave. Because there's usually people who know that stuff who, who are there and will be there Monday. One other thing I wanted to mention, just not that you need convincing, but one other thing that came up in the course of having discussions about this is the other thing about extending on the existing tower at 1022 is that the investment was still in the neighborhood of $80,000 and it would be a year-to-year lease, so we'd have no guarantee on that site as well. Because either the landowner or the tower owner can cancel that contract
and have to build anything.
With appropriate notice, so it's not a good part of the, of the system. And so with this new tower, we'll actually own all the towers. Actually, that's not true. We're still on the, the large one at Bedford Road. But we'll own all the other towers.
But actually, we do, that's right.
What I'd like is for you to direct Tim to send a email to the planning board on your behalf stating that.
You said that already.
That there are no.
It's, it's our application, so hopefully we support this. I actually signed it on our behalf.
And the other thing is to set a time, perhaps at your next meeting, to have a serious discussion about whether or not to have a special town meeting this fall to get it. We're having, the group advising Tim on this is having a meeting next Friday at which we're hoping to gather the information we would need that will sort of show where we are. I know Chief Fisher is concerned that one of the items that we were delaying not be delayed and the only way to do that would be to be able to get the funding this fall as opposed to wait until next June.
Are there any other things that we might be considering bringing in fall as well?
I'm not aware of anything. I've talked with the moderator and the only date that doesn't work for him is November 4th. But he's pretty flexible.
Is it possible that maybe the planning board would have some things to bring forward?
I don't, you mean zoning related? I don't know if they've got enough time to, or bandwidth to get that done.
I've spoken to the person who was supposed to tackle marijuana and they're not anywhere near far enough along that they would be allowed hearings and do that. Yeah, and, and not that it has to be your rule, but generally speaking, the selectmen tried not to do bylaw changes at special town meetings, notwithstanding the fact that I proposed an entire bylaw at a special town meeting.
They tried not to.
The thing is, we also have discussed having regular fall town meetings to do only bylaws, in fact. And we are talking about our own board procedures and guidelines that may have some, redound on some of our bylaws as well. And, you know, maybe part of our housekeeping, we should be thinking about forward, that we can bring that at the same time so that we could get some of the, and I know there's some numbers that are messed up in the, in the bylaw. So, you know, housekeeping things would be nice to take care of if we could.
So, just to make sure I understand, the money's there, it's just was appropriated differently, so we have to get town meeting to.
No, we need more money. Basically, the, the, the presentation to town meeting would be, we, we've decided to build our own tower as opposed to doing this lease arrangement because within five years or so, we will have spent as much money on the lease as the difference in this cost, actually, it's more like seven years, actually, the difference in the cost. And, and the, the lease had an escalation agreement, so you get to 20 years and it's another $150,000. I mean, it's like $25,000 a year after that, and again, not a sure thing. So, no, we do need more immediate funds. It's gonna save us money in the long term.
So we either need a town meeting or a bake sale.
Or we postpone some things and, and would probably have to find some money in general funds that we could put to this just to pay the bills prior to next June. I think we would have some difficulties. And Chief Fisher is, is very concerned about having the whole system up and running.
Cut selectmen salaries and throw that on the front.
The one other thing I do wanna mention, just full disclosure, is there were, I believe, three abutters at the CONSCOM hearing that expressed their displeasure with the fact that this is here. And so, and they will presumably be there Monday night for the planning board. But we will make the case for why we need to do this.
Okay, so is there a motion to support this ending?
I move the Board of Selectmen support the site plan review for the, for passing on to the planning board.
That's, you're, you're supporting, you're voting in favor of.
Recommendation that the planning board.
Approve this.
Remove the site plan review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
And, and again.
Thank you for everything, as always.
And again, the question about getting a discussion point for whether it's a special town meeting or not at a future meeting.
Yes, yes, we'll have to keep that firmly in mind. Okay. So, at our last meeting, we received a memo, a response to queries that I had for the town council about granting an authority to the town administrator, there's ways it could be done and hands could be moved. And I'm hoping that everybody had a chance to kind of review it and review the exhibits and are prepared to talk about whether they think this, you know, any of this is a good idea, would cherry pick the, the parts that we thought were interesting and that we should maybe be pursuing for our town.
So, if I may just ask, the, the issue that we're trying to address is that there are, that not all staff in town hall report to Tim? Is that the issue that we're trying to address?
That is, I would say, one of the issues, but certainly a major issue, but there are other issues in terms of, you know.
But that, so, was there? It's just because of the efficiencies, because different, because there's so many people or? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I, I think that there's multiple ways we can address this. I mean, I know that one of the things that I had brought up in the meeting was we really need to get good at making sure that everybody's doing performance reviews and everybody's.
Yes.
And, and one of the things is, well, is that, is, is that a struggle because there's so many different reporting relationships? I'm just trying to think of, you know, understanding what we're trying to solve would be really, really helpful and understanding, like, the right approach here to take.
Well, certainly, that is a major thing. I don't think it is perceived that Tim has the authority to either perform some of these performance reviews or insist that they get performed by whatever other body and that they get turned in, you know? And I think, so, I think there's a bit of wishy-washiness about the personnel, personnel board, personnel administrator, who has the authority, who doesn't, and I think it makes it an impossible job to have responsibility with no authority.
This, when I read through this, it seemed to be mostly about, it was a lot of really great information. It seemed to be mostly addressing an issue of can Tim hire and fire employees?
Well, actually, it obviously is a problem in a lot of towns because I, what I noticed was a lot of them have a specific thing. That one that I wanted to be looking at, what did I do with it? Appointments by the town administrator of department heads and other personnel under the jurisdiction of any other elected board shall be made with the advice and consent of that board. So, that, that's out of the chapters, the Belmont one. And the, and in the Grafton one, they have, let me see where did I? To appoint and in appropriate circumstances, so we move. This is not it, sorry.
I just wanna make sure that we're, we're covering all the bases of what we're trying to solve.
To coordinate the activities of all town agencies serving under the offices of town administrator and the office of Board of Selectmen with those under the control of other officers and multiple member bodies elected directly by the voters. This is something I think we have a problem with in this town.
And which was, which, which option was that one?
That is town of Grafton.
Town of Grafton did, weren't, weren't they the town manager one?
No.
No, they've got a town administrator. Because we have, you know, planning board who hires their head or directs their head. We have, West School Committee is a whole different animal and it is statutorily. And we have other boards that are kind of directing and it's kind of like, that's how those silos get, you know, fiefdoms happen. And then Tim is the one who is, by our personnel policy, is supposed to be directing them, has a hard time doing it. And most of these, a lot of these say, for this purpose, the town administrator shall have authority to require the persons so elected or their representatives to meet with the town administrator at reasonable times for the purpose of affecting coordination and cooperation among all agencies of the town. Boy, that's words of one syllable. Giving the authority to the town administrator to get everybody under my cap. And I think this is a sort of thing. But however, can this be done under one, the Board of Selectmen voting to delegate whatever authority? I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. I don't know how.
That one seems to say it's, we can delegate whatever authority we have.
We have, right, exactly.
He says the only dissident, he says that it could be.
But there's a lot of this is, people we don't have the authority over, so it's not really gonna solve. What, you know, what, what are the rules if we, if we think through? Seems to me like, you might wanna start with a list of what we're trying to solve. But if we're thinking through, like, making sure that everybody's high performing, so it's performance reviews and, and can the Board of Selectmen require all departments do performance reviews?
By our own bylaw, as per our own bylaw?
Yeah, or.
I have to get the bylaw out, because we have a personnel, yeah, well.
Yeah, I don't think it's clear.
It's not clear that you have that authority. Questions to which one of those?
It's not clear from our personnel bylaw.
Right, because then the next step is, because you have so many people who are managing, who are, who are chairs of committees, there needs to be some central body that's reviewing the performance reviews for consistency across departments, right? Some people are just gonna put glowing recommendation, glowing.
Right, right. Okay, so do you want me to? In section two of our personnel bylaw, all town departments and positions shall be subject to the provisions of this bylaw except elected officers, employees with personal contracts, and employees of the school department. So it does not exclude employees being directed by other elected boards. So I believe that we do have the authority under this bylaw to do that. But we would have to, you know, ask town council about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, as we talked about a few weeks ago, the, the bylaw needs updating, certainly.
Okay, and, and the other thing that it says, by the way, on this first page, Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the overall administration of the personnel bylaw and the personnel system. The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a personnel board and the Board of Selectmen shall appoint the personnel administrator. Now, of course, that's contradicted later.
That's what you're saying. Does it make sense for us to, like, between now and the next meeting, write down what are those things that we really think we need to be addressing? And then put that together and give it to town council and say, how can we address this?
Yeah, well, I think this is the major, one of the major things, in my opinion, is what you, you articulated and what I would call the personnel issues in town and, and getting a grip on, on directing and managing town personnel in a consistent fashion.
And also, I think, facilitating communication across departments.
Right.
Yes.
Have we actually given boards a heads up that we're planning to do this?
You know, the, it's major, mainly the planning board, right? I mean, see, Board of Health is also, is that elected?
Board of Health, was actually, they were specifically mentioned as.
Also, the health agent is.
They were actually specifically mentioned as some of the problems, Board of Health. In the letter.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we need to do that. We just certainly need to.
It's CONSCOM, Board of Health, Planning Board.
All the elected boards.
Well, I think we should still give CONSCOM a heads up, you know, because even though it's in our authority, because they're appointed by us, just a heads up, this is coming down the road.
Because they directly manage, we don't do anything to do, to manage that. Anyway, anywhere, we're not really, you don't really manage the CONSCOM, right?
No, not directly, no.
So, well, then there's, there's also, okay, there's also, I think we need to, we've been looking at the personnel board and I think a lot of the things, personnel powers and duties of the Personnel Board should, should rest with the Personnel Administrator. And, and maybe we shouldn't even have a Personnel Administrator, it should just, it should all be the town administrator who acts, you know, and that's just part of his duties.
Part of the duties.
His duties, because it gets very confusing on, in some of this, some, in fact, on page 11. Every other paragraph, one says, personnel, and the personnel, every other paragraph has town administrator, town administrator, Personnel Administrator, Personnel Administrator, you know, switches back and forth. It's because it's totally scheduled to panic. So, when we really met, you know, it was only one person here. I'm sure they didn't think it was two people. it was two people. So. And I think also in recruit, you know, we just have to make it clear that when people are recruiting for the town, they need to involve Town Administrator.
Yeah, without a doubt.
So.
I just think, the hiring and firing is definitely one thing, this seemed to be really geared around that, to which is what made me start thinking, wait a second, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Because there's hiring, firing, but if we don't say performance reviews, if we don't say, you know, staff meetings, you know, if there isn't any teeth to any of those things, then it may, you know, we may not solve what we're trying to solve. And if we look at that full list, maybe there's a way that, you know, the, the elected boards and the other boards can continue to have some autonomy with those staff, but we have a structure in place through Tim to ensure that there's high performance and that, you know, people, you know, people are communicating and, and working well together.
And also too, if there is an issue.
Because it'd be easier if we don't have to yank away the control over the staff, because that's not going to go over well.
Right, right. But also too, if there is an issue that, you know, the Board has somebody that they can work with to help resolve it, as opposed to just, you know, being the Board trying to resolve an issue with a person they're very highly dependent on.
Yeah.
That's probably.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, you know, the Chairs of these Committees are Chairs for a year. And it's a lot easier to just kind of let it go for that year than to address it.
Yes, exactly.
They'll spend three quarters of that year just running a job.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, do you propose that we have a joint meeting? Or that we have that, I call it, meeting of the Chairs?
I propose that first, we know what we want.
Okay.
And that between now and the next meeting, we send to Tim and Jen and Kate, you know, can we send to Kate and not be, we sent to Tim and Jen and Kate what are, what the things are that we would want to have discussed?
That would be good.
Or, you know, you know, what we see as the issues.
Yeah.
And then we can discuss that. And then we can figure out how now, how do we broaden it? Because now we're all in agreement with what we're trying to solve.
So, we were discussing Personnel issues, things. Then there were other descriptions of Town Administrator's duties. And I, I don't know if there were any in here that popped out of anybody that they thought that we should be considering for.
I mean, there's some very good ones in there. We, you know, we can go through those and cherry pick the things we think would be most appropriate here.
Yes. I agree. So that would be also helpful if you would, you know, just say, you know, number four on page two of the, you know.
Give me two Graftons, one Belmont.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can call him A.
Yes. That would be helpful.
As long as we're putting more work on Tim, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Double down.
Okay. Are there any other, Ronnie, did you have any more updates about?
The, I mean, as a liaison?
Yes.
The one thing I did want to mention, Tim was involved in this too. Jan Corneille arranged a phone call for the Master Plan Committee that's reviewing the proposed, the consultant, the proposals from different firms that want to be the consultants.
Yes.
And we had three proposals. We agreed very quickly to eliminate one of them, which was from Oregon. And they're, you know, they, for combination, I mean, they, I don't need to go into lengthy detail, but it was really clear to everybody on the phone call that they just, they didn't have the, the sort of particular knowledge for something like this. And also, they were going to, talking about, you know, a lot of the cost was going to be flying back and forth.
Travel.
So they just weren't up to the caliber of the other two proposals. So we agreed that we would interview both of the other two firms. And we'll have a, where, well, Tim, you can speak to this if you want to. The, we're sending out dates to them for August.
The letters went out to all three firms today.
Yeah. And so one firm gets the.
Dates for Thursday and Friday to interview the two firms that were.
Right. Thursday and Fridays, that are the first and second, am I saying that right?
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So.
I've got to get in touch with them because they got to kind of pick and choose when they wanted to do it, so.
And both, you know, strong proposals. Jan, others that have more experience in this, yes. One's a group from Concord and the other is based in.
Watertown.
Yeah.
A little familiar with town meeting forums.
Yeah. And they've done master plans for other towns. So, yeah.
And the people from Concord know where Carlisle is.
Only when, when the sun is up. Soon as the sun goes down.
So can I just make a shout out? I just want to thank you. I don't know if when you all got here, you noticed how stuffy and hot it was in here. The AC was on, but I texted Bill Rissow and he doubled the flow, and that's why we're not sweating right now.
Thank you, Bill.
I just want to thank Bill. I mean, as soon as he made the change, I could feel the cool air coming through so much more.
Huh, you're right.
So, thank you, thank you, Bill.
Yes.
And Lee Storrs may be interested in serving on the new committee.
Oh, great.
Great. So, we need to talk to him.
Yeah.
Make sure he understands. He was just in a terrible bike accident.
Oh, really?
He's okay.
Motorbike or bicycle?
Bicycle.
Yeah, he rides a lot.
But he may be, he may be interested in.
Dangerous mode of transportation.
Yes.
That's great.
He said, yes, I want to say, I said, are you sure? So I want to just.
Don't ever send that phone text out.
But anyway, thank you, Bill, for keeping us all awake.
Yes. Okay. We've got to keep moving so we can get out of here on time. It's already past nine thirty-five. We're lagging. So, appointments and resignations?
Just one resignation, I think.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the letter of resignation from Ruben Klickstein, a member of the Council on Aging, effective July 12, 2019. Thank you very much for his service.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're sorry to see him go.
Do we need to do anything?
Oh, and then we have another one.
Wait, hold on a second. Hold on.
Yes, I know. We have Ann, what's her name?
Oh, James.
Ann James, right.
Oh, okay.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we change Ann James of 30 Baldwin Road from an Associate Member to a Full Member for a term to expire on, I'm looking for, who's.
Twenty twenty-one?
He wasn't, he's not listed in here, so it must be the vacant one. So it must be for a term to expire June 30, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator's report.
Oh, okay. We talked about the site plan review. Second item, in order to dissolve CCTV as a corporation, their legal counsel is filing a document with the court for voluntary dissolution. And both the towns of Concord and Carlisle should indicate that they agree that this ought to be done, that we assent to that petition. So I've got a motion there if the Board would vote that to send that along, that, you know, both towns are in agreement that the corporation should be dissolved.
So what would happen, like, you know, because we really weren't a part of this whole process when they decided to dissolve it. What if we were to say no at this point?
I think that maybe the court could probably do it anyway.
Could do it anyway?
But.
Let's make it easy.
They have asked us, yeah.
I move that the Board has sent to the Complaint for Voluntary Dissolution of Concord-Carlisle Community Television, as filed by their counsel in the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just point out, so I noticed it says that remaining funds available for distribution of Carlisle will be approximately thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah. Let's not let that money run holes in our pockets.
We haven't received them, but that, that's the number.
Has to go back into the CCTV fund, right?
The PEG access, I believe it does. Hope we haven't seen it yet. Also, I'm reminded there was a, there was a part two to this that I didn't write anything down on. But the Public Access Advisory Committee, Christine Leah, who was here earlier, has been our representative.
That's right.
And she's stepping down. So we'll need to appoint a Carlisle representative to the, the new public access corporation that's overseeing.
And I talked to Kerry Kissinger and he said he would be interested.
Oh, he'd be interested, yeah. Great.
Done that before.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you wanted to appoint him, that'd be a great idea, I think.
Yeah, let's put it on our agenda for next meeting.
Okay. All right. Item number three, I think I had met with Kate and Alan a few weeks ago about the proposed warrant article, that in addition to the projects that, that are now being funded through municipal facilities and long-term caps, that we, we look at an article that would deal with the more routine building repair and maintenance issues. Our architect has told us that a good rule of thumb is, I think, three percent of the value of all facilities and buildings ought to be devoted on an annual basis to maintenance. So if we use that rule of thumb, that the insurance value of all of our buildings is about nine million dollars, which would equate to a, about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars on an annual basis. I think we probably can't get to there in one year, but if we started to fund such an account and sort of stepped it up in a few years' time, I think we could have a, you know, ready resource that could be used for the, you know, the things that need to be addressed, you know, the painting and the carpeting and the, you know, changing of the locks and, you know, things that aren't big enough to be a project but need to be addressed. So.
So how does this impact the rest of the budget? I mean, if we put this in here, currently, a lot of those things are managed by the building because it's there, it's currently in their budget because we didn't centralize the budget, because we didn't really have.
Right, right.
The ability to manage that centrally at the time. So.
So I think those things would have to kind of be stripped out of the individual budgets and accumulated.
Yeah. But I think, I think there's still a lot that needs to go into figuring that out, right? I mean.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. What can be pulled out and what needs to remain.
So this, this is just. So this is just saying that maybe we should have a warrant article?
Right. I think the next step would be to discuss it with the Finance Committee and the Capital Committees and.
Because of re-budgeting.
And all the building managers.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, could we poke FinCom and have them pull those numbers together for if we did take, you know, the funds? I mean, we could do it, but they have more.
Part of the problem is that, that line item for maintenance, for instance, let's take the Police Department, they also maintain their, their police cars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not all building maintenance. So we can't take all of their maintenance.
No, no, that's not what I'm suggesting. But they should have an idea of how it's spent, right? I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I have to question that.
I think, you know, I think. A number of things that I'd like to talk about, about this. Like, one of the things is that I was talking to Chief Soros, and one of the things, because he has people that he's paying anyway. And one of the things that he, that he does is, you know, they're very committed to maintaining that building. And, you know, we need to figure out how does the, you know, like we did with the school and, you know, in to a lesser extent with the library, you know, how, how do we allow him to maintain the maintenance of the building if we do this? And, and at what level does municipal facilities come in and do something? And at what level do the, does the fire, the fire department just do it? Because they're doing it now and they enjoy doing it. And it allows them to be putting in their time.
Right. One of the suggestions that was put forward by the Municipal Facilities Committee was that it requires pulling a permit, and then it should be done through the town. If it's a matter of just, you know, ripping up some old carpet or fixing a, you know, stone wall or something like that.
Yeah, or fixing a door. But then, how does, how does this fit into that?
That, it's a good question. And, and we are trying to take baby steps. And we've started a lot of conversations and trying to figure out how to, and, and by the way, back to the previous thing, some of the, those Town Managers things, there's a lot of stuff about maintenance and who's responsible for the maintenance as well in there. So we could be looking at those, that language about.
There we go, add that to the list.
Add it to your, to your list. Well, because.
There's a seven-year contract.
Ken is responsible for the maintenance of the buildings.
Lifetime contract.
Basically, right?
Right.
So, again, has to have some authority to be able to check up that is being done because he's the one that ends up with the responsibility. The buck stops with him. So he has to have some input as well. So, yes, a lot of discussions and talking and backing and forth thing. And no, you know, we're not trying to, you know, dislodge things wholesale, but we're trying to start a new kind of department here, which is going to be impacting various other departments. So we're trying to feel our way.
And I think the key here is, clearly, we need a lot of input from the Finance Committee on this. Let's advance it to them.
Right.
Yeah.
To start a deal with it.
Exactly.
Right. And you are now the new member of the Long-Term Caps. And this is also, could possibly be thought of in certain respects. But no, maintenance really isn't long-term caps. It's fixing the this and the that's.
I haven't heard from anybody in Long-Term Caps, so.
Uh, they doesn't usually get off the ground until after FinCom gets more. But, but having said that, there's a bunch of dilly items like that in, that have been in the past in the Long-Term Caps budget that really should be sorted out as well.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? Just, so the Municipal Facilities Committee, did, because I know that we started off that they actually came to the Board of Selectmen for approval for the expenditure of the funds. Do they now have the authority to expen, because I know we redid the charter. Did we change the authority to them to expend the funds? Because there was oversight in the initial one, because I wrote the initial one. I'm just wondering if there's still an oversight of it. Because I know that there's, you know, that there's, there's some concern about the size of the tank we're putting at the Fire Department. And I'm just wondering, at what level, how do people know how to escalate something if they disagree with it? Right?
Yeah.
If, if, if there is a disagreement, there needs to be an escalation point that, you know, the Municipal Facilities Committee can't just say, no, it's going to be this way. There should be a way of bringing it.
Exactly.
Because I guess it's a three-hundred gallon tank, but a five-hundred gallon, gallon tank would have, you know, been marginally more and more effective long-term, is what their feeling was. And actually, more than just their feeling from what I've heard. But I just wondering, like, what is that process? Like, what, what is the, okay, I understand what you're saying. I really think it should be this way. Is there another body that we can go to just to, just to confirm that, that that's what we all want to do?
Yeah.
Because the Municipal Facilities Committee is a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. How do we know when it should come up to the Board of Selectmen?
This particular thing, in certain respects, had already come up to the Board of Selectmen when we took out the other big tanks. And the question was asked the Board of Selectmen, do you feel that we need two fueling stations for the town? And the Board of Selectmen said no.
Yes. But when I, when I said that, I had no idea that there needed to be a fueling station there, a tank there anyway.
Yeah, this is a different tank. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, yes, and I agree with that.
But that tank could have been used for the other purpose, right?
So then, exactly. This is another underground storage tank that's being taken out for the, the generator. And I think that, well, I can tell you what the resolution is, was, is that the Municipal Facilities Committee has a warrant article and has lots of things that has to get done. And is trying not to spend too much on something that is wanted as opposed to needed, possibly, because they have a lot of other things that are really needed in town. And so they, in their estimate. And so, they, in their estimation, they said, what is needed is a three-hundred-gallon tank and, which is what we would contribute our funds towards. And if you feel you want or need more than that, if you have funds in your budget, we will then install the larger tank, but you pay the difference. And that was the resolution of the problem.
And that's what he's doing? Because that's not, I just talked with him like last week and.
Last week, we had another meeting on Tuesday. Did you talk to him before Tuesday?
No. Yes, last Tuesday. I talked to him before last Tuesday.
Right. So, that was the resolution of the problem.
Because I'm just representing him because I'm the liaison to the fire department, right?
I understand. Well, yes.
But, but I think, you know, there just needs to be some way, because, you know, of.
Exactly.
Kind of keeping us, you know, because I honestly, I had no idea there was another tank. Right? And so, when, you know, when saying, should there be another, you know, should we have two tanks? Well, no, of course, we shouldn't have two tanks. But then we're replacing another tank that I didn't even know about. But, and I.
Guess what? Nobody knew about it.
Yeah, and so, but I think at that point, we say, hey, wait a second. You know, something's just changed, so what we talked about as a board before kind of changes a little bit because it's just a different tank.
Yeah. But we're putting, the Municipal Facilities Committee decided to put a tank in that was necessary for the generator because we were told that we weren't really supposed to be looking for another fueling station necessarily. If he can make it into a fueling station, we won't stop. We wouldn't think to, wouldn't want to stop him, but we didn't feel we had the authority, nor did we want to spend the funds, honestly, on that. And we, we didn't feel that we could tell him what he, how he should operate his, his department, but then we weren't willing to contribute to his decisions about how to operate his department because it went beyond our mandate to just make sure that things were working, that facilities were working correctly. So, it was, it was really a naughty.
So, he's putting in the five hundred gallons?
He's putting, put the five thousand dollars extra.
Okay.
He'll defer some other things that he was going to do and, because he decided he wanted.
No, that's for the money later.
All right.
I mean, it could be something as simple as you escalated if the Municipal Facilities Committee doesn't agree with whatever board they're working with, right? You know, like, if there's a disagreement between.
And if we couldn't have resolved it, he certainly could have come here to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, right. I mean, ultimately, I think he could have resolved on your own.
Yeah, I think he just doesn't know when to, you know, like, when is it worth doing that? When is it worth, you know, so he came to me.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I came to you, and I guess I came because I wasn't here last, two weeks ago, I came too late.
Yeah. It was already.
But I think, you know, it's also just, it's, you know.
We were able to resolve it, and I think it was resolved amicably. And I think, and we also talked about in the future, because we do have a new facilities manager, you know, we said, look, you know, you guys are good, we understand that, but we have a guy who's an expert and you could rely on him, and you could use him also to be your advocate with the Municipal Facilities Committee, because we're relying on him to let us know what needs, absolutely needs to be done in town, you know? So, we're trying to get everybody to.
So, what if we actually had somebody from the fire department on the Municipal Facilities Committee?
I think we, I think we should have their, their facilities manager.
Yeah, whoever does, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, that's, and in fact, there's no reason why they couldn't attend every meeting and, you know, either as a member, actually, we're looking for members, I just, so, yeah.
All right. I'll talk to Brian about that when he's back from.
The question, the only question is, we, you know, we have Rob Furtado and Stephen Bastick as non-voting members. Would this, would this person also be a non-voting member at the fire department? Because they're, you know, staff?
I don't know. They're, they're only barely staff, right?
Yeah, I know, I know. On the other hand, if they're not.
You know, the committee made up of people who aren't going to advocate for themselves.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, but the idea, though, is that they also can advocate for themselves, right?
Well, they can anyway.
They could anyway.
When they make a request.
And they certainly, if they would communicate and cooperate with the facilities manager, he would be their, a very good advocate for them. You know? So, I don't, you know, I don't quite understand the hesitation to cultivate that relationship.
All right.
Okay. Also, in your pack, there's a letter from the National Resources Manager at Hanscom Air Force Base. They're looking to relocate some personnel within ten miles of the Air Force Base. I think this is a federal requirement that they have to notify abutting towns that they're, they're looking to relocate some employees. I mean, some towns might be looking to, you know, offer up a building, for instance, or something. I don't think it really, you know.
They've already identified the building, apparently.
Yeah. Do they want to move into Green Elva?
Highland building.
There you go. Why did I think of that?
Between the two of them, we don't have anywhere near three, about thirty thousand square feet, but.
Yeah. Welcome to them.
We can give them twenty-one, twenty-three. I'm sure Eric would sell it.
Okay.
All right.
How many budget counts?
This is just informational. We don't have to do anything.
Barney found that on an email. And then going forward, I guess we're going to meet on the 27th, so we'll kind of mash those two agendas together and sort things out.
Yes, we'll meet on the 13th.
All right. That's everything I had in my report, although we did, we did get a, an email recently from a resident concerned about snow plowing. Did you want to address that, snow plowing on private property?
Before we do, are we all set on this schedule then? Because it's been saying draft, but are we?
Yeah, no, I think, I think, well, we are as far as the meeting on the 27th.
Yeah.
I confirmed that with the FinCom and with the, I mean, some of the other dates, you know, can, and sometimes they do change, but at least the first item on our, you know, the, the joint meeting is, is scheduled.
So, how many of the thirteen things are we moving to the 27th?
I don't know. I'm going to have to look at what we can reasonably fit in. We're certainly going to do the joint meeting. The FinCom with.
Just said the deer regulations.
Oh, and Ferns, yeah.
Ferns should not.
Let me take a, let me take a crack at that and I'll get that out to you.
So, Tim?
Yes.
You can go ahead and reach out to Lee about being on the working group? He's just confirmed he's willing to.
Do that, yeah. I think Lee would be, be very good.
To be, to be converted to a committee manager later. Then we get the committee up and running.
Don't scare him away.
Okay. All right.
Does everybody here know Lee? He was the chair of the school building.
School building committee, yeah. Did a great job.
See any relation to Hal Storrs? Who was the DPW chief at Concord?
No.